Planning Commission Study Meeting. Everyone, please silence your cell phones and planning devices. Please be courteous while we're trying, while we're in discussions. Mr. Bowles?
Here.
Mr. Culpepper?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Honeyman?
Here.
Mr. Lightner?
Here.
Your people?
Here.
Your still-learners?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a form to conduct this discussion. Okay, thank you. We're gonna change the agenda a little bit. We're gonna start off with number two. B 398, BR 1315. That's Southfield Funeral Home.
Through the Chair. At the request of Mr. Yono, because he had a leave early last week and he has a funeral this evening, I requested that we moved him up on the agenda. We had done an overview last week, but the commissioners did not have a chance to ask any questions from Mr. Yono. Mr. Yono didn't have a chance to present his comments. So if the commission would allow, I'd like to have Mr. Yono address the commission, answer any specific questions that you have, and then Mr. Spencer and myself will be have to answer any questions that we're planning to talk about.
Okay, sound good. Can you say your name again, Mr. Yono?
My name is Yuri Yono, 18338 West 12 Mile Road. I own Southfield Funeral Home. I've been there for thirty-two years.
And just please give us an overview of your plan.
What I would like to do is, I purchased the homes that are right behind the parking lot, behind the funeral home, just so that we'd have more parking for our invitees and that there would not be parking going over in the streets. It would bring in about another hundred car parking. We'd have a hundred and fifty car parking. We put in, I believe it was forty-one cars, maybe seven years ago. And that helped quite a bit, but now with the parking we might be losing, we definitely have to have that parking in the back.
Through the Chair. Yes, through Yono. If you wouldn't mind making your comments to the commission.
I'm sorry.
But in any event, we talked briefly today.
Yes.
And I had mentioned to you about the concerns about cars turning out of your parking lot on Guy Street and going north. And you had indicated that you would be okay with left-hand turn only.
I have no problem with that at all.
And you'd also said that you would be willing to work with us on moving the driveway a little bit further north.
Yes. Whatever it's going to make it work, make it easy for everyone, I have no problem with it.
Now, just to remind the commission, we're actually here tonight to make a recommendation on rezoning from single-family to vehicular parking. And the vacation of Cash Street and the rest of the plan would actually be part of administrative review, but it doesn't hurt to talk about some of these issues in consideration of the rezoning.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
I think it's a good sign that you are, you do need more car use. That tells us that your business must be doing pretty good.
Well, we, we, again, we have large funerals and we try to accommodate as much as we can as far as parking is concerned, but it's not enough. We definitely need that parking in the back. And if we, if it's untrue, that all the neighbors can tell that we keep it nice and clean, you know, we'll do that.
And if I could remind the commission that since the vehicular parking would be immediately adjacent to residential, a decorative masonry wall would be required and is included in the proposed plans.
Any other questions we need, commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Is this the revised plan here with, or is that where the drive, I don't remember if it was revised?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
If I may, if I may, staff has seen this for the first time. But if you recall, the main driveway is right here. This is actually a new location, a new driveway location. You can see the base upon how the curb cut is. This is meant for a left-hand turn only with a no right-hand turn. Now, if there's a question as far as your procession lines, does it line up any differently in cars' lineup?
We really don't have any processions whatsoever from there. And we don't ever have anything in the morning as far as funerals from there. We mostly go to the church, so we really don't have anything going in the morning. Once in a while, we may have someone, family come in, immediate burial, they'll be in there for an hour in the morning, and we head back to the church. So there's really nothing in the mornings at the funeral home. Most of the time, most of the visitations from four until eight p.m. in the evening, Sunday's two to six. So it's just a four-hour visitation.
Yes, sir. Let's go back.
Question. Hypothetically, if you have a large funeral procession and you are sharing that parking lot with the proposed Kmart proposal, so if you have a long procession, a lot of cars, who is gonna block off the areas in your backyard church for parking for your people? You're sharing it with Kmart. And you have, I'm talking about Walmart, you share it with Walmart, and you have a funeral. Who's gonna be responsible for making sure that you have enough people to come back in that park? You're gonna have to block it off with cones or something, because you got people coming from Walmart, parking back there, they're gonna park where they can.
Well, Walmart, I don't expect really a lot of people, or any people, coming from Walmart, to be honest with you. The opening in the back of the new park, right back here, is what we're talking about, right back here.
Right.
That's the connection to Walmart.
Right.
And the new opening is right over there, and of course, the cars will be coming from the front on 12 Mile. So really, people can come in through here, people can go out through here, so that way won't be any congestion whatsoever.
Okay.
But we're not gonna have anybody standing there directing them.
Okay, so you perceive that if there is not a funeral going on, a lot of those places will be empty?
It could be, yeah, if we don't have any, and I don't expect a parking lot to be packed every day, or every funeral, by the way. So that should, but if we have an overflow, then they will go into Walmart parking lot. That's why we put the opening there.
If I may, through the Chair, is that not your question, though?
The question, yes, the question was, if you do have an issue with overflow and that you have to actually park on the Walmart site, are there sections of the parking lot on Walmart's property that will be sectioned off, and who will do that? Who will actually know which parking space is gonna be used for your?
There won't be anybody there. People are just going there and they just park where they find a spot.
Yeah. Whether it's on your side or Walmart.
Sure, wherever they find a spot there. And in that, on the side that we're talking about, I think they're going to have the flowers and gardening area, it's gonna be a gardening area in that area, that spot.
Okay. Where's Walmart Road on that? Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. With the location of the, referring again to the exit onto Guy Street, is that this drawing isn't pretty far enough to the west to show what I want to be talking about very well, but people technically could come in on Guy Street, go in there, go across your parking lot, and into Walmart.
Then what, that, from there, they're only gonna be going out to the left, they're not gonna be able to go to the right.
But there's nothing to prevent them from coming in that way and going out that way, is there?
Probably not.
Should there be? I'm just observing.
If I may, through the Chair, can you clarify, I'm having a hard time understanding what you're saying.
Okay. That exit going to the west on the Guy Street?
It's right here.
Yes. Is there anything that says that people that learned this, and everybody in the neighborhood is gonna know it because, but anyway, people that's wanting to make a turn into Walmart, if that is congested right there at the entrance off of 12 Mile on the Walmart, if that's the exit, then people can turn into Guy Street, turn in there, go across the parking lot, and go into Walmart, is that not true?
I mean, I think that it's possible that people would do that.
Particularly, well, I know 12 Mile really, really well. And when this backs up, going east, people will actually use Guy Street just to get out of traffic if they won't return to the north. And they'll use Guy Street if they know the subdivision, they'll, to cut through the subdivision and come back out on, what is it, Webster. And so, I'm just pointing out what I think could be a problem, particularly during Easter, Christmas, et cetera.
Through the Chair, and I'll let you answer.
Sure.
I mean, it's our intent to request traffic control signs that there's no true traffic in the north. And I know that if the subdivision doesn't exit out, it just circles around and back out.
But it also goes through the neighborhood. Well, just as long as it's all accurate, yes, I'm just trying to point out something.
We could also request traffic controls about no true traffic. And I believe that Rob has indicated that the improvements to 12 Mile and Southfield should alleviate some of the existing stacking that we're currently experiencing.
If I may, I'll-
If I could, just a moment. And I sort of rudely interrupted the planner, people can go into Guy Street, and it doesn't just go around and around, you can go out into the, into the rest of that subdivision very easily.
Can I, can I say something?
Go ahead.
They, the invitees that come in, the visitors that come into the funeral home, majority, I say the majority, all of them are Calvians. I don't know anyone that lives in that area behind there, so they're not gonna make a right turn because they'd get lost.
Okay, I'm not concerned about the people that are coming to your funeral home.
No, but I understand, but I just want to let you know that going in there, using those streets, it's not gonna be busy. Nobody's gonna go through there.
From people from the funeral home, I understand that.
Yeah, if I may, too. I mean, we took your comments from last week, and I think you'll see through the Walmart presentation, too, we took a lot of what you said last week, and we went back, and hopefully you'll see that we did make some, I think, some pretty good changes. One of the things we did was, we did shift that driveway a lot further north, and that's what was requested. Now, to try and stop people from doing this, no, but to try and go through a parking lot and use it as a cut-through, now that it's even offset even further, it's certainly gonna be very difficult. Will people do it? There might be one or two, but will it be a very prominent movement? I would say absolutely not. I know for sure that I would not try and do this, snake my way through a funeral and parking lot and into the back of the Walmart. I certainly wouldn't do that myself, and it's one of the reasons we went back to going for it, and we took your advice, and we talked to Mr. Yono, and he agreed as well, is to try and shift this driveway a little further north and try and make it a right-in and a left-out. And again, we took a lot of your advice last week, and we thought, yeah, you know, this might be a good idea to help prevent, not only cut-through, but to move this driveway back a little further. Hopefully, we see it's a good thing that we did and not, not a bad thing.
If I could, I do think it's a good thing. I think it's an improvement.
Sure.
But I'm just pointing out.
Sure.
What could happen.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm doing.
And I wouldn't deny that. It certainly could happen. Whether it happens frequently, I would say that, I would estimate as a traffic engineer that it would not happen frequently.
Okay. Commissioner Peoples?
I just wanna know, exactly why do they, do they have to have an entrance or exit onto that street at all?
That, right now, would be the only access, other than a shared, to make a left-out onto 12 Mile Road, because they can't make a left here, they'd have to snake all the way through the Walmart to get out of the funeral home.
Oh, okay, 'cause they're not coming out of that one filter that's south?
This right here, you can't make a left-out onto 12 Mile. So this, this right here is a very important access point for the funeral home.
You make a left-out to 12?
It's not only that, to have people come in, and Mr. Yono would know his operations, but to have people come in, you know, and eventually circulate through and then back out.
And there's already a cut already there?
Yes, there is. The existing cut is right here, and we took that and moved it further north and made it more, you see, it's more of a curve, to try and prevent anybody returning right.
So it's, and it's supposed to go left?
Yeah. And I believe that was the comment that was made last, you know, we're willing to work with you, and I, you know, we thought that that was a pretty good idea.
Well, that's what that looked like. I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, that's a good question.
But I was wondering if they had the open, you have, you have the function, no question about that. I was just asking, 'cause I'm not sure how these operate.
And as a matter of fact, this, this location here is pretty close to the existing location where Cash Street is, so it's very close, which obviously would be vacated to accommodate the additional parking.
Well, I will say this, I'm not saying I'm for or against or anything, but I don't see someone that wants the Kmart coming in over there. Who did it first? Okay. Um, well, I respect both. I don't see them driving all around here to do that. I just don't see it, and I don't see people wanting to go into a funeral home. I think it's just, that's just my, but people do, you don't know.
And in addition to that, we are gonna have the monument sign, this red sign right here, that's gonna be the monument sign that's gonna highlight that as the, at this point. I understand that, sir.
If people learn that, if it's a thief that do, learn that, to do that, they will do that, just so they can make that left turn instead of the right. So I could see them doing that. I'm trying to seem like I'm a resident right now. I mean, we have to, we're all the hats, so.
And that's, and that's one of the reasons we did go back and try and make some adjustments. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
It seems like it's a pretty big seat of parking without any landscaping or trees. What are your thoughts for any landscaping or out on the?
Whatever the city requires, we will do. And we've done that, we did that the last time when we put additional parking. It looks beautiful.
All of the, I guess, curbing is all the stripes on the ground, there's that line, you know, which is probably more concrete stuff in between.
This would all be grass area through here, this would all be, you know, grass and plantings. This part through here would be grass and plantings, and then all of this along here, and all of that along there, and then the back wall area, too, would be some green space. The only part that would be striped are these little end islands in here.
And that's just a curb in the center there, right?
Yeah, this, this would be, that's correct.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Lightner, since the west property would be a six-foot-high wall, we'd rather have the landscaping concentrated on the outside perimeter to soften that wall. You're not gonna be able to see in anyways, so in this particular case, you know, we'd be in favor of highly landscaping those curridges, so it softens and screens, screens the interior.
Commissioner Bailey?
Is not part of the proposed extended parking lot actually part of the Walmart property?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
The current church property? If I'm, if I'm looking at that correctly, where that light green line is, is that not the property line for the, for the?
It is.
And so, part of that proposed parking lot is actually part of the church property.
It is right there.
Right. And I guess what I'm asking is, is this, is this a shared site plan for them? I'm not sure how that works.
Well, through the Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, is this piece being consolidated into Mr. Yono's new property? So it's, technically, it's gonna be lot split and consolidated into one parcel, and it's not going to be part of the proposed Walmart site. And this would, because it's vehicular parking, this will be handled administratively for review separate from the site plan, should that go forward on the Walmart parcel?
I wanted to clarify that.
Thanks for the clarification, that helps a lot. Any commissioners? Should we all sit?
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
There's somebody in the audience who has a question.
Okay. Say your name again.
Yes, my name is Fred Spencer, I'm on 18352 Winter Street Drive, at the end of Guy. I have a question for Mr. Yono. I access my home by the drive streets almost every night, and especially during the days with his visitations, there are periods, there's a backup to get into his facility that's extreme. Out on the South, out on the 12 Mile, it's blocking the left-hand turn lane on the eastbound traffic as well as the traffic coming west. What I see in this plan is, you have the, you have him either sharing the entranceway with Walmart, their trucking, and himself. That's one lone input from, on 12 Mile, which to me, at certain hours, is gonna be absolute traffic disaster. It's pretty bad now, it's controlled fairly well, but the traffic, and if you throw trucks in the middle of that, or a truck comes in and wants to get into that loading dock that's right there, you've got, you've got a mess on your hands. I just wanted to bring it up for consideration, because I think it's gonna really cause some traffic problems.
Yono, would you like to respond next?
I don't know of those trucks, I think Walmart people can probably answer that question.
The Walmart truck traffic, and again, we'll get into some of that during the Walmart presentation, and I believe Mr. Heeks, Eric Heeks, talked about that last week, but the trucks are, certainly can find certain hours of the day, and there's only a few, as Mr. Heeks indicated last week, there's only a few trucks a day. And a lot of those would not necessarily be showing up during, I've known, too, that area certainly backs up around the four to six p.m. few gallons. And so Walmart, what they do is out of there, and again, Eric would be better to answer this, but during, out of their area where, their distribution area, they'll, they'll have the trucks schedule them around certain hours a day, so they don't hit that peak, peak period of traffic that backs up, and so that certainly would be done at that point. And that driveway is actually, it prohibits the left-out, which will certainly help. So it is a right-in, right-out, left-in.
People wanting to get into the funeral home.
Please, please speak to the Chair, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, as I was saying, I mean, that, again, that driveway prohibits the left-out. And again, I don't wanna get into the Walmart discussion right now, but that driveway right here was put together, was developed to get everything as far away from 12 Mile and Southfield Road intersection, and combining two access driveways into one certainly makes sense from an access management perspective, and that's what we tried to do. And so we tried to make this access situation the absolute best we can. I certainly think we did with the site we're working in.
Okay, I don't wanna get too much into Walmart traffic flow plan at this point.
Well, it's a combined site.
I just had a question for you, you were speaking of the Guy Street entrance?
No.
Can you, I'm, I'm misunderstood what you were speaking of. Which entrance?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. To clarify, I'm talking about the entrance off of 12 Mile, that's the only entrance off of 12 Mile. Right now, the entrance to the funeral home is on the inside of the home, so they come in, they have a separate driveway from like with Big D. And they, they come in, and a lot of people are dropped off at that point. There can be four, five, six, ten cars backed up on 12 Mile, and/or waiting to turn left into that driveway, because that situation seems when it starts with a lot of traffic. I'm just saying, that seems to be dangerous, especially if you're adding no Walmart, okay? Worst-case scenario, if it's the holidays, you know, under December, there's a lot of traffic, okay? You have Murphy's Law coming, and you have jam parking lots already, and they have a state visitation. So I believe it's been a problem, and it's got a significant problem.
Well, I'm just wondering, because based on the site plan as I see it, I'm wondering if the extra parking would alleviate some of the backlog that's happening at that entrance? If the issue is there's a big visitation and there wasn't enough parking, is the plan to extend the parking so that cars won't get backlogged right there, and that way they'll be able to pull into the funeral home?
That's correct.
And is it also the plan with respect to the new cut pulling back, for people to use that as an entrance as well?
That's correct.
So is that the plan to kind of alleviate that backlog?
And that's what was described last week. That's the reason we're here tonight, is for Mr. Yono, is that additional parking is going to help the current situation. In addition, he's gonna have two curb cuts right here, two access points to the Walmart development, that would ultimately lead back around to the traffic signal. So it's certainly a better condition than what it is today with the additional parking, and I believe it's in excess of ninety parking spaces that would be added. Thank you.
I have a two-part question. The first question is, and maybe I missed it, 'cause I didn't get to the last meeting until the end of the meeting. Where will the left turn be from Southfield Road into Walmart? Because it appears, if I got it right, that the left turn lane going south and north will be shared. So you'll be able to, cars will be able to, if they're coming northbound, or going southbound to 12 Mile, they'll be able to turn left at the gas station. If you're coming from the south headed north, will you be able to turn left currently where the House of Watch vans is? And is that, can you go through there to get to the funeral?
Through the Chair, Ms. Arrow, would you mind holding that question until we actually get to the Walmart site? Because they're gonna-
Well, I'm talking about the funeral home as well, too, if they're talking about that shared parking.
You're talking about left-hand turn from Edwards, and that's not dealing with-
Can you go left on Edwards to get to the funeral home in, in the Walmart development? Since they'll be sharing the parking, that's the question.
Well, through the Chair, there is access through the Walmart parking lot to the funeral home.
So it's important for someone to address the fact that you can turn left, go into Walmart's parking lot and get to the funeral home. So that's very important.
As I stated, they're gonna do a presentation that's gonna take us through that.
And then I wanna ask another question. We're talking about the shared parking and the overflow, and then we're talking about the greenery and the shrubs. I was at Twickenham Valley Association meeting, and Councilman Ken Seiber showed up, and he mentioned something about code enforcement being changed, or either, it is this way, I'm just not familiar, where now, in houses, or at houses, the bushes can't come beyond the windows. So now, you're talking about making all these shrubbery, covering up these things, do you think that all of this greenery is eventually going to lead to, because you have thefts in your stores, we have theft in all of the stores, Myers, and is that gonna turn into a screening wall for criminal behavior with all the trucks?
Through the Chair.
To cover up?
I'm familiar with what Mr. Seiber through his housing subcommittee, neighborhood subcommittee, they're talking about adapting standards that shrubs have to be tinned and maintained below the window sill of homes, so that, it appears that, you know, you can see in and out for crime prevention. And we use crime prevention through environmental design standards, as well as in policing when we review all landscaping and site plans. There's a rule of thumb of no more than thirty inches evergreen hedge for height, so that people can't crouch behind that. And we use these principles when we do our site plan review and our landscaping review. And we withhold not only this site plan, but all site plans for the city to those standards. But that's something that's being explored.
Through the Chair, how high are the green, through the Chair, how high are those shrubs or the trees that you're talking about will cover them? How high is it?
As I stated, our maximum is thirty inches high off the ground, and we like to have a clear zone between thirty inches and seven feet. So tree limbs have to be limped up to seven feet, shrubs shouldn't be any higher than thirty inches. That's the clear vision zone that we maintain.
And through the Chair, the tree limbs, are the leaves gonna grow down, and is it going to eventually take up some of that space between thirty, three feet and seven feet? Don't the limbs kinda expand and the leaves?
It's the property owner's responsibility to maintain the trees within our standards.
And through the Chair, what's the tree standard for branches?
Okay, let me make this clear, this is not a public meeting. This is a planning commission study meeting, okay? It's not, you get your opportunity, you have to see public meetings, public hearing, actually dialogue back and forth with us. But this is not the place or time for it. But I will take caution if we have something that's had not been brought up or that's relative to, relevant to the conversation. relative to, relevant to the conversation.
Thank you. Letter delivery man on 29230 Guy Street. This young lady here made a good question about whether the parking, is that, right now, the funeral home uses St. Pete's parking, so there's a lot of parking there right now that they're going to lose because of that. But that's not the reason for the backups, because there's parking now. The backups are just a traffic problem. It has nothing to do with the parking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other commissioners, got any questions coming? Okay, we're going to close this portion of the meeting, thanks a lot for your time. We're going to move on to EP 1247, SP 1293. That's Tim Horton's Restaurant.
This is EP 1247, SP 1293, special use in site plan of beer complex of Haggard Bell, Tim Horton U.S., limited construct a 1,953 gross square foot, Tim Horton's Restaurant, with ride-through property located 19701, West 12 Mile Road, south side of West 12 Mile Road between Evergreen and Southfield Linker High School. The property itself, as you can see on the aerial photo, right there, actually, let me go to the zoning first. Property itself from P2, planned business, as well as the property directly to the west to the east, we do have an RM zoning, single-family residential across the street. With regard to the existing uses on the property, the site itself is currently, has a vacant Uptown Eatery restaurant on it. If you know this area, you know that there's been some difficulties with restaurants on these properties, it's been Mr. B's, it's been Uptown Eatery. The proposal here is for a 1,900 square foot Tim Horton's Restaurant. Directly to the west, we have the Evergreen type shopping center, we have multiple family directed to the east, and across the street, we have a single-family residential. If I may, I do know the representative of Tim Horton is here, he does have a site plan by the east, and you move your eyes back and forth, colored site plan is on the other side there, and I'm going to let him continue on from here for the moment.
Thank you, Patrick Bell, Tim Horton's 565 East Grand River Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Yes, just following Mr. Spencer's presentation, we're very excited about this new location in Southfield. It is one of our new, Tim Horton's Cafe and Bag Shops, it also will have a drive-through component to it. Really what we're doing is, we're going to demolish the existing Uptown Eatery, and this will be a new building, an entirely new site. The project itself will consist of a long-term ground lease on the property, and we're thrilled to be here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Naveo?
How much of the site are you leasing? Just the shaded portion?
We will be leasing to this line right here.
So, it's not the entire shaded portion that you're leasing?
No, this shows the improvements that we'll be making to the curb cutting that exists with the shopping center.
So you're not leasing that, but you'll be using that?
That's correct.
And making improvements to it?
Yes.
Including the fence, right?
Including the painting.
And is the rest of that parking lot to the, what do you say?
That would be to the south.
To the south, is that going to be barricaded off, or?
At this point, I believe it's the intention of the property owner to leave it, to leave it open, make any repairs that are necessary based on the review by the staff, and I don't know what their intentions with the remainder of the property are moving for.
Mr. Coe, Mr.?
A question. I went through there the other day, and I was looking at your drive-through for your parking area, are you going to have this, so you got the driveway, and you got the cleaners to your right, on the, on the east side? The cleaners?
Okay.
Are you going to have the drive-through to come through? Because the way it's situated now, you can come off of 12 Mile, or you can come into the cleaners, and there's a bagel place there, you can come into the area and go right into the current uptown. Why are you going to block that off to keep?
This will be closed off, this will be curbed.
Oh, you're going, okay.
Along here, and there'll be landscaping in this area. We're looking to relocate the curb cut that exists on the site further to the west, to get a more cohesive and thorough traffic.
Okay, so it'll be tougher than what it won't be like it is now, so you're just ready to?
That is correct.
All right, I understand, okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. With respect to the plan, you have the dumpster enclosure, that is different from the one that exists right here at Tim Moll and Evergreen, is that correct? Because it looks like those are open. Is this the plan to, it looks like your leaves are closed off?
Yes, they are gated.
Okay.
With vinyl gates.
Okay.
They're woodcured vinyl gates.
Woodcured vinyl gates, okay. And is, I don't know if you're familiar, but is that different than the Tim Moll and Evergreen?
It probably is, I'm not familiar with that location, but yes, I'm sure.
And then you have a location also for delivery trucks also, right?
Yeah, typically, deliveries occur in off-hours, and our normal, the busy hours are six to ten in the morning, and the deliveries are outside of those hours. Normally, we get one or two deliveries a week. Typically, what happens is the truck will access, because I stopped right up in this location, these are normally employee parking spots, and they'll offload here in the entrance side.
Through the chair, can I just ask a clarification? You said woodcured vinyl slat for the gate of the dumpster?
Yes, yes. Is that how it's done?
Well, I would be in favor of vinyl, unless it's, I guess we'll need to see a product spec sheet on that.
Yeah, I'll bring a sample of the next one. Yeah, they're not, they're like a solid, but let's call it a composite.
All right. My vision of vinyl slats are the kind you stick through a chain link fence.
No, 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 no.
I guess you want to be comfortable that this is a durable sound.
Absolutely understand.
Mr. Coe?
Looking at your dumpster enclosure.
Yes.
Is this the brick brownstone, is that what, how the dumpster is going to be enclosed?
Yes, it will be brick to match the building. Yes.
This drawing shows a much wider opening coming in off the 12 Mile Road, and so you're relocating off the current one that's furthers to the east, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And moving this one closer to the, to the main entrance, to the rear of the strip center?
Yeah, the rear access to the strip center, correct.
It looks like it's very close, in fact, they're almost adjacent to it.
Yeah, they are, they are pretty close to each other. That access on the shopping center there, I don't think is utilized as much as some of the other access points on there, but.
It's seen a lot of trucks showing to the rear of the building.
Sure, absolutely.
And employees.
Yeah, and typically, they're exiting out that way because of the configuration of the shopping center, and their, their delivery drops, and they would be exiting, typically out that way. We do have the plans into Open County Road Commission for their review.
I beg your pardon?
We have the plans, because that is, 12 Mile Road there is under the jurisdiction of Open County.
Right.
We do have that in to them for their review, to see what their comments are also on that.
So they haven't responded yet?
Well, they have, but at this point, we don't have a formal response. Their initial response was very favorable to that location.
For the entrance to be moved adjacent to the other?
Yes, just exactly what you see there, yes.
Well, I'm concerned about that personally, and I'm also concerned about allocating a piece of a parking lot back here. And also, the speaker is going to be facing a residential area of fifty feet to the east.
Yeah, our speaker systems, today in the quick-serve restaurant industry, speaker systems aren't what you probably saw in the past. They actually adjust themselves automatically to ambient background noise. So the conversation that we're having here, actually, probably a little less than this, is what you'll normally hear at a speaker. It's just like you're standing next to each other. That sound doesn't travel very far at all. Plus, there is a screening wall along the residential property, we talked about, you know, our repairs to that, and we will, you know, have some landscaping in that area, too, to deaden any sound. And we can adjust those speakers also.
You know, by nature of the chair, we do have, as we have on other restaurants like these in the past, most recently, we have a number of Haggard Bell's that are came, we do have standards with the zoning ordinance that states that you have to be at a certain decibel level at property line, and it can't be heard 100 feet from the unit itself. We'll make sure that those conditions are part of the site plan.
100 feet would be fifty feet inside the residential.
It's inaudible, within 100 feet of the unit itself. But it has to be a certain decibel level, fifty, at property line.
Do you also have a digital order board also?
There will be a digital order board.
Form the order.
Order board, yeah.
Oh, just, it's going to be a single, single line, or it's going to be like a double line?
The drive-through itself, it is a single line with an escape lane that goes around it, that's what you see here is the escape lane. So anybody gets over here and they just say, well, you know, I didn't want my coffee this morning, which I hardly believe anybody would do, and they go around and exit the site.
That's always good.
Right.
Okay. And yeah, how is operation again?
Our hours of operation are 24 hours. Typically, what you'll see, and a lot of this is up to the franchisee, but typically what you'll see is, the dining room itself is usually open somewhere between five and six o'clock in the mornings, and they'll close maybe nine, ten or nine, but the drive-through itself is open 24 hours. Just want to compliment you on the site layout, it's really efficient, smooth, and makes a lot of sense. Really liked the outdoor seating area, 12 Mile Road, I think we need more pedestrian activity, and just more action on the streets in general in the area. And I also understand it's just, it'd be extremely burdensome to you to improve the entire site that you're not using. So it makes a lot of sense in improving what you're using, leave the rest for future development, and hoping that I think it's a good building. Thank you, look forward to seeing you.
Okay, there's any questions?
I wanted to comment about the site before. It has a curb cut to the east, and then the other cut is in that same area that we were talking about, where the other people have their incoming drop-off.
Right.
Uh-huh. So that was being used, I remember going to this site and coming in over there.
Right.
To set up the new, the way you had it here.
Yeah, currently, as the site exists, you can kind of come in here and dive right into the site. We are going to close it off.
You're going to hose that off, okay.
You will not be able to do that anymore.
But you can go for the traffic on your property?
It's our intention to isolate our traffic to our site, it's not a burden to the other side.
Okay, if I may, through the chair, just with regards to the site plan itself, they do meet the parking requirements, seventeen required towards the property itself. With the leased property, I believe there is what, thirty?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two on the leased property itself, so it comes twice what they require. They also have the back parking lot as well, I'm sure they need it as well. All setback requirements, the entry required is fifty feet all the way around, they do meet all setback requirements for the building, they're well over on the landscaping requirements as well, I'd say do need the zoning ordinance requirements for parking setbacks, landscaping, building.
Okay.
Thanks a lot. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, since I know we have some new faces here tonight, I'm going to ask that the Walmart representatives go through their PowerPoint presentation again, maybe a little bit tighter than last week, but give the opportunity for audience who wasn't out here last week to get an overview. And then, because staff had already done, made the recommendations and comments, we'd be happy to answer specific questions after the presentation.
Through the chair, I wanted to ask one thing. Normally, when we have a meeting.
Could you speak else, I can't hear you.
Normally, when we have a meeting, like now, it's a study meeting, sometimes we want to get feedback from the audience, resident, and like as a public, I was just wondering, has anyone had a few concerns about the company?
Why do they want to be told that? Through the chair.
That's their business model, that's not even their business. And mainly, just the drive-through is 24 hours, from what I understand.
And then through the chair, you know, they're talking about the old restaurant location. When you're leaving, say, the dress farm, and you're coming out of Crowe on the 12 Mile Side where TBS is, there's like a little stop sign right there that tells people to stop there, and they don't stop, it's sometimes congested there, because you do have cars coming from Southfield Road towards Evergreen, they're trying to left in there, not one of those people. And the traffic there is really, really bad, with cars trying to get in there, and get out, and go in a different direction. It's just a pretty bad spot there, and we need to explore that a little bit more.
Okay, so we'll move on. Okay, Walmart's please.
Mr. Chairman, Eric King, Walmart Public Affairs, Robert is with me again this evening, so, as staff recommended, we'll run through a briefer version of what we did last week, and then certainly defer to the chairman and commissioners and staff for specific questions that you would like us to respond to. So I'll have Robert start out. I gone through some of these things again last week, and again, I'll be brief from the store itself, and what a supercenter is. The proposed store location for this site is 130,000 square foot store. A standard Walmart supercenter is 184,000 square foot store. So this proposed location is about 50,000 square feet smaller than you would see at a normal prototypical Walmart supercenter. Supercenter will include full grocery complement in addition to general merchandise. Again, a prototypical store at 184 would be about 300 employees at the store, based on this size, and there'll be some flexibility that the store manager will have to have, but we're talking about staffing in probably the 240 to 270 employee range. Some of these are just very generic points about what we do at the location, number of property tax on this current site, what we estimate to generate is about $350,000 on an annual basis. I think breaks out to roughly about a third of that would end up being support in the City of Southfield's general fund, and of course, it would be up to the residents and their elected officials on how that general fund revenue increase would be allocated. Some of the other benefits from Walmart, the community, done a number of charitable things throughout the year, continue to do, in addition to just the immediate response to loads that were impacted from the storms southeast in New York and New Jersey. These are some of the specific numbers here of what Walmart needs in the state of Michigan, some of the recent charitable contributions from 2011, just about $22 million in grants and donations, some of the more local groups here that residents might be more familiar with. And then what we do by way of business here in the state of Michigan, we have 32,000 employees through Walmart that work here in the state of Michigan. Those 32,000 employees in our business generates about $42 billion with suppliers here in the state of Michigan, and that estimates from Dun &amp; Bradstreet about 62,000 additional supplier jobs as a result of all the economic impact that Walmart has in the state of Michigan. And I'll turn it over to Robert to kind of walk through the site itself directly.
Good evening, Robert Matko, CESO, out of Lansing, Michigan. Good to see you all good this evening. Oh, again, I will make this a little briefer tonight, and try and hit specifically.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Robert Matko, CESO, out of Lansing, Michigan. Good to see you all this evening. Oh, again, I will make this a little briefer tonight and try and hit specifically on some of the changes or some of the things we went back and we took some of your comments last week. So I'll focus on that maybe a little bit more. But I do want to, again, just walk us through some of the rezoning. Because our request is also to rezone the parcel as well as site plan approval. And we already covered Mr. Yonos, but the rezoning for his parcel would be primarily the rear, a few lots in the rear and as well as Catch Street, which would also include vacation. And you can see here, the existing zoning for the Walmart parcel, which is this area, this rectangular area here. A portion of that where the church is located, approximately nine and a half acres, is currently zoned, single family. And then you can see here in the back, a lot of this portion is B2, which is planned business. And we propose to rezone the Walmart parcel to a B3 rezoning. You can kind of see the rectangular piece here. And that would result in a little over 12, 12 and a half acres, just shy of 13 acre total parcel. You can see down here would be Yono Funeral Home, the proposed zoning there, which, which would allow for additional parking. And again, would be vehicular parking. We walked through this slide last week, and this just shows an overview of what the current site looks like. There, there, obviously, if you drove on the site, you can see some of the parking lot is really failing. As well as, and I'm not sure how many of you have been out there, but even the, even the walls surrounding the parking, the existing wall, it's in bad shape. It's, it's kind of a whitish color. Over the years, it, it, it's darker in some areas. So obviously, that is in bad need of being replaced. You know, what Walmart's proposing to do, this, this slide here just shows what is to remain and what is to be removed. You can see everything in blue here is what would be demolished to facilitate the Walmart construction. You can see here, this is the St. Beat Church, this area. This blue area right in here is an existing portion of a shopping center that does have Einstein bagels in it and a, I believe, some, it's a watch place and a few other vacant kind of areas. This area to the red, or as they shown it red, is the existing shopping center to the north. It used to have a Kenzie Restaurant in it. That is to remain and is not part of the Walmart development. So again, the Walmart property line would end up being right in this area. So this, this area is off, off Walmart's area and is not controlled by Walmart. You can see over here is the Yono or Southfield Funeral Home area. This slide also shows many of the existing curb cuts around the site that would be closed and removed. You know, a lot of these access drives here is something else did develop, obviously could potentially have access to either Southfield Road or 12 Mile Road in those areas. And again, as stated, Walmart plan is to remove those and utilize an existing access drive, which is the signal Edwards Avenue. And combine with the funeral home, another access point on 12 Mile Road. This just shows the area grocery stores in a two mile radius. You can see in the, in the middle there with the blue, that is the proposed Walmart super center. And it just shows again some of the surrounding grocery stores in the area. This gives just an overview of the Walmart site plan. Again, it's approximately 130,124 square foot development. It is a super center, as Eric indicated, so will have a grocery and general merchandise component. The blue here is proposed parking. You can see up here in Southfield Funeral Home, the blue is their proposed parking as well. This is kind of a lighter cyan color is parking, obviously that's existing, that would remain and is off the Walmart site. As you can see here again, the access, this would be a three-lane access driveway that leads to existing signal at Edwards Avenue. And again, as discussed, this access point as far as possible from the intersection of 12 Mile and Southfield Road would be along the west property line. And again, would be a right-in, right-out, left-in, so the left-out would be prohibited. Okay. Maybe I'll move up here. This, we, we've talked about this for the Yono Funeral Home, so I won't get too much into that. We go to the parking summary. I believe one of the commissioners had asked for a slide of this, so hopefully you did receive that. This just gives a breakdown of the parking, the proposed parking for the site. The Walmart proposed 623 parking spaces. Required by zoning ordinance would be 683 parking spaces. The funeral home currently has 64 parking spaces. Proposed would be 152 parking spaces. They're only required to have 47. The strip center existing is 176, proposed is 146, and required is 255. Now, what happened with that required, where that asterisk is, is there was a waiver granted prior that was granted for, of course, that here, it was well over, there's 91 parking spaces. You know, obviously, the Walmart site at this point is not requesting a waiver, but it is overall short 74 parking spaces. It's about 6% to 7% shortage, but there will be cross parking between all three entities. And that's something important to keep in mind. So cross parking will be achieved between all three entities, the funeral home, the Walmart, and the shopping center.
So it's shared parking, there's a shared parking agreement with all three entities?
Yes.
Is that what you say?
Yes, that is correct. This slide just shows, gives some idea on the green space. Required by ordinance is six, just shy of 16,000, I'm sorry, 15,075 square feet. We're gonna be proposing over 22,000 square feet of green space. That does not include some of the area in here that will be dedicated to the county for future improvements along Southfield Road. You can see here, as discussed in our prior meeting, that will be a berm. It will be eight feet in height with eight-foot tall staggered evergreens on top of. In addition to that, we are gonna have landscaping along the Southfield Funeral Home as well as a eight-foot wall that will extend from Guy Street all the way along the north property line of the funeral home and then along the west property line of Walmart. And would then meet the existing wall just north of the Walmart proposed property line. And again, will be eight feet in height and again, a brand-new wall. Traffic, we did conduct a traffic impact study for the site. As indicated, the road commission has reviewed that study and concurs with the findings in the study. Did look at several key intersections with obviously the primary intersection being 12 Mile and Southfield Road. Obviously, there are, there are current issues at that intersection, specifically with the west leg of the intersection. And as I noted last week, Walmart would be contributing zero volume to that west leg. It's one of the reasons we have the access driveway on 12 Mile Road as far from the intersection as possible. In addition to that, Walmart would be contributing less than 5% to that intersection. Southfield Road currently has approximately 48,000 vehicles on it. And again, Walmart would be adding to the intersection of Southfield and 12 Mile, less than 5% increase in traffic. Also, as stated last week, there will be pass-by trips for this site. ITE estimates as much as 28%. In our study, we actually decreased that a little and used 24% as pass-by trips. And again, those are trips that are not destined for the Walmart. They might be passing by the site and decide to stop in. So it's not considered a new trip, but a trip that would be taken from the existing traffic. You can see here what the site, the proposed Walmart trips would be generated. What we're looking at is, obviously, in the AM peak hour, the, the site does not generate as much trips. The weekday PM peak hour does increase a little bit, but still, it doesn't coincide necessarily with the peak of Walmart. The, I already went over the pass-by trips. Some of the traffic recommendations, we, we are recommending a right-in, right-out, left-in driveway on 12 Mile Road, so the left turnout would be prohibited. We're recommending combining that driveway approach with the funeral home. We're also recommending over a 400-foot right turn lane into that driveway. In addition, we are recommending at the intersection of 12 Mile Road and Southfield Road, we're gonna be recommending that that entire signal be completely removed and replaced. As indicated last night, I call it a simple span or a diagonal span signal, which means it just has two poles. You can see here, the picture shows the current signal at this intersection. You can see, signal heads are a little hard to see. It's just a two pole. There's one pole and there's the other pole on the other side of the intersection. Signal heads are spaced very far apart. This intersection is well over 15, 10 to 15 years old. Obviously, in need of modernization. Walmart will be modernizing this signal. And we are looking at going with a mast arm installation, very much what you see here, some decorative poles, some nice lighting on it. You can see the mast arm, how it spaces the signals out, the signal heads. We also have pedestrian signal heads right on the pole. Again, it's gonna space everything out, it's gonna modernize the intersection. In addition to that, we are gonna have right turn overlaps. And I believe one of the commissioners last week, you know, had a comment about the southbound to westbound right turn lane. That right turn lane currently backs up during weekday PM peak hour 187 feet. That's through the synchroanalysis that was done. With the right turn overlaps as proposed, that right turn lane would drop to 99 feet. So it is a significant improvement with that right turn overlap. And what that is, is when your left turn phase, your left turn arrows come on, your right, your opposite or opposing right turn lanes would receive a right turn green arrow. And they would be able to go, when they say the north, south, left movement were going, the east, west, right could then go as well. And that, that will significantly help. In addition to that, we are gonna be removing and replacing the existing signal at Edwards Avenue. And it also is gonna be identical to the mast arm and decorative poles that are being shown at 12 Mile and Southfield Road. So this also, this design would be incorporated at Edwards as well. New controllers, new video cameras. You know, you're talking in excess of $500,000 worth of improvements.
Through the chair, just to point out too, Robert, that part of our recommendations and our discussion is the internally illuminated street sign, which is a big, will make a big difference if people are approaching.
That is correct. And that is something that would be done on the signal as well. If you've seen some of the internally illuminated signs, they're a real nice feature. They really show what the street is. All of this is, is going to help the, the overall intersection. The road commission has, has agreed. They have stated that these improvements will improve the intersection, the current overall operation of this intersection. As we go again up to Edwards Avenue, we're also gonna be, we took our, initially, early on, we had shown that as just a two-lane section. We ended up widening that to a three-lane section into the Walmart site. What that's gonna do is it's gonna allow any left turn vehicles to get out of the through lane internal to Walmart. And it's gonna allow Edwards Avenue to function much better. So you can see, there are a lot of different things that we've done with the signal. I think that will be a significant improvement over what is currently there. Some other concerns from our last meeting, there were some questions that were raised about parking lot lighting. This site will be furnished with LED lighting. You can see here, this is, this is how the site would look. This gives a good overview of the LED lighting. And I'm sure some of you have seen LED lighting, even with, you know, with me, I've switched over some of my home Christmas lights to LED. And it's a, it's kind of a whiter, cleaner-looking light. Some of the older style is more, gives it more of a goldish color. So again, you can see, it'll give a nice white look to the parking lot. Now this, you can see it's very dark. This is actually on the other side of the wall. You can see there's zero light spillover on the wall. Now granted, if you look right at the lights, you're gonna see them if you look directly at them. But as far as spillover, we're looking at zero-foot candles beyond the wall. And we're gonna have a wall very similar to this. But this one may be 6 feet. Ours is actually gonna be an eight-foot tall wall. We, we already went over extending the southbound, about the right turn lane at 187 feet to 99 with the right turn overlap. The funeral access drive on Guy Street, again, we took some of your concerns back. I think we reworked that drive. And hopefully, this is something what the planning commission was looking at. We think it's a good idea for traffic circulation as well. And so it has been implemented into the plans. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Brushears. If it's okay with you. He can quickly go through the building elevation. Thank you very much.
My name is Chris Brushears. I'm also with CESO. Last week, kind of went over, or actually, before I get too far along and not forget again. A broad material board. Just kind of give the, the board an idea of some of the materials that we are proposing to use. In addition to that board, there are two sample boards right here against the glass, which are the brick material. So just to kind of give you an idea of some of the, the quality of materials that we've upgraded this building instead of just using a bunch of painted CMU. Instead of using a lot of painted objects, we've, we've upgraded them to have an integrated colored products. It does give you an example of some of the glass that we're using and some of the other products on the building. This store was upgraded throughout, especially on the sides that face Southfield Road and the side that faces the parking lot area, the most visible side, because of access and, and pass-by. Along the fronts, additional windows were added. You can see that there's two samples of glass on that board. And that kind of gives you an idea of, of the clear glass and then what we call spandrel glass, which has a tent behind it, so you can put it somewhere where you usually wouldn't be able to put clear glass in the service area or, you know, a freezer or something like that. You can still have that look to upgrade the elevation. That gives you an idea of that. We've also added those spandrel glass windows along Southfield Road. And then the red color here, that's the main building color, is the red brick that's over here on the wall. Give you an idea of what the main building color will look like and the variation in the material. It's not just all one color. And then the yellow kind of brown color here is the other brick back there, along with the accent blocks that are located on that board. This just kind of gives you an idea once again of the layout of the store, that the front entrances along this area, the grocery being along this area, which has a larger grocery than a normal store of the size, and then the garden center on the side facing the Southfield Funeral Home. The signage, once again, as we talked about the access drive here on, off 12 Mile, there will be a low monument sign to highlight that that is the entrance off Southfield Road to the site.
Can you stand behind us? You still get complaints if you can't see. But you do it from back here.
Okay. How about I do it from over here?
That way you won't have any complaints. Okay, thank you.
He can block all towns, basically.
We also have the sign here down at the, the signal off of Southfield Road that, that's the sign here. But on the one on 12 Mile, we have to talk with the residents to reduce that, that sign height to reduce any visibility from the neighborhood of that sign. It's only, I think it's eight foot. I don't think that's good right now, but that's about the, the level it'll be at, so it won't be visible back from the neighborhood area. At least kind of give you an idea of the front elevations for the parking lot, some of the upgrades. Entrance has had an added glass to it, which is an upgrade from a typical store, to give a different look and to break up an area that's, that's sometimes a little less articulated. This area right here where you see the, the crap out of the trees, this is also where there's some benches, where we've kind of put a seating area so that people waiting for rides or other transportation can have an area to rest that is out of kind of a normal traffic pattern area where it's not congested and people are, and the cars are not as close to them. We also have per discussions, we'll have a bike rack over in this area to allow the pedestrian access. If you remember, pedestrian access from the neighborhood comes along that side. And so they can, somebody have a bike, if it comes from the neighborhood over there, they can park it in that area. This will be the view from Southfield Road heading south. Used to be a short fence with columns and decorative trees to give a nice streetscape along that side that currently we don't have. This element will be at the corner to provide an upgraded look and to also provide a seating area there at the corner of Southfield and 12 Mile, along with evergreens along the rear to kind of cover the service area. Just a couple more views. A look along the rear to kind of upstream that for the parking lot. A look along the rear to kind of upstream that for the parking lot. Last time, last meeting, we kind of had a couple of questions about some of the demolition of the existing buildings. Walmart will require their contractor to implement a recycling program for both the demolition waste and the, any waste from the new construction. So they contract out with the company that manages all that. And they will recycle different elements, copper, different, different pieces depending on what all is expected in this area for recycling. And they have to report back to Walmart that they've met thresholds of that, and if not, why they have not. And that, that is a part of the contract where they will be recycling that material. Also, we talked about some of the trash and dumpster kind of issue. Just again, this one will not have a dumpster, it will have a compactor so that the trash from inside the store will be put directly into that. That won't be in the dumpster where it's left open. Stuff's going to be blown out. It's not that kind of situation. It is also screened along the back. It's in the service area, so it will be, let's screen visually and to help anything noise and anything from that area. You know, I have the wall plus the firm along the back. And there's also a recycling area for cardboard and plastics. We're open to questions?
Mr. Chairman, last week there were a number of questions about asset protection, what we do inside the store to protect our customers doing the parking lot. So we brought Samantha Stevens with me this evening. Samantha's asset protection manager for one of our Metro Detroit markets. If there are specific questions that you and commissioners have about crime or what we do to respond to crime, how we police our parking lot, Samantha's here to answer any and all questions that you all may have.
I guess.
Good.
I'm just basically going to go over when a Walmart is set up in a community, how we set up our safety and security with our staff in our store. So based on the crime index and the surrounding retailers, we decide what our staffing is going to look, look like for asset protection. Usually it's about four to five associates that are going to protect the building inside and out. As far as cameras, usually there's over two hundred standstill shots inside the camera or inside the store. And then on the perimeter of the building, on the outside of the building and on poles in the parking lot, we have cameras that actually surveil the entire parking lot. Usually there's very little space that's not covered by our parking lot cameras. We also have a relationship with the local police department with minimum apprehensions or any violent activity that might happen in the parking lot or within the building. For a twenty-four hour store like this building here, at night, we do close off the grocery entrance, I'm sorry, the GM entrance, only leaving open the grocery entrance so that you can only come in and exit through one side. As far as, you know, staffing at night, depending on the crime index, you know, in this area, what they're going to decide is if they're going to have parking lot patrol. They could have somebody who drives around the parking lot from six PM until six AM is usually what we do if we do decide to put parking lot security in the parking lot. Does anybody have any questions about security or looking at that?
Is that, yeah, armed security or just strictly unarmed?
It's unarmed. They basically, inside the store?
Inside and outside.
Okay. Inside the store, they are unarmed. If we have an issue where we need to call police, we don't have any armed associates inside the store. And then in the parking lot, it's strictly an outside security company that we hire and they're in a vehicle. They don't touch anybody or really, I'm sorry. They only communicate with our customers and associates in the parking lot if there's any issues.
Are they armed or unarmed?
Unarmed.
Inside and outside?
Inside and outside, yeah.
Mr. Chair? I, I know that each store varies and you use the term crime index. What, I'm sure you've done your homework. What is the crime index that is anticipated for this area in this store? Is it something? And again, I'm, we're just asking. And hopefully we got a better crime index than others. We don't need the full security. But Ed, your initial comments, and I know after talking to our police department and so forth.
To the question, I mean, the initial review is that it's, it's a low crime area. It's not what we would, what you would consider to be a high crime area. But to that point, we're also waiting on some interaction, particularly with the police department. There's only so much data that we can compile as an outside entity. There's a lot of that information that we're still going to need from the chief of police, city staff, and other retailers in the area to make our final analysis. And as Samantha mentioned, we use all of that data in compiling the analysis that we utilize for each individual store. So if the more high crime area, we know we're going to have to do more to protect our customers, to protect our associates. And so the store manager will have the leeway to look at utilizing, as Samantha said, a security detail that would patrol the physical location. If it's a low crime area, we don't receive that number of incidents, then that's, again, the store manager, the market managers, and our regional asset folks will look at it and they'll devise the plan for staffing based on those, those levels. So obviously, there are catastrophic events that happen in life. We can't account for all of those, but we use all of the available data that we have. And some of that is still yet to come to give a final number. But from the initial spot, it, it looks great. And we expect, as I mentioned last week, our, our rates will be absolutely in line with what you're seeing with your other big box retailers in your community, whether it's Target, Home Depot up the road, or Meyer and Kroger that are within the two mile radius of us. Our numbers match exactly what their numbers are going to be.
Who else?
Thank you.
Can we still discuss the, Mr. Bill?
The summary of the parking that's currently existing and being proposed shows a hundred and seventy-six existing on the strip center. I don't know who I'm addressing with this.
Sure.
Is that a hundred and seventy-six with the part of the, of the shopping center that's left?
Yes, that's only the remaining portion. Or, I'm sorry. It is, it would be, it'd be the, where the Einstein bagel is and the remaining portion. So it would be, if you can get to this. It would be both the, it'd be this, oh yeah, if you can go to the, it would be this area right in here, this parking and this parking here.
So how much parking would be left existing for the remaining shopping center?
That's on that slide as well. The one forty-six.
Okay. So there's only thirty parking spaces on the part that's being torn down?
That is correct. It'd be mainly prep, prep a little bit in this area and some right around in here, the front and the sides. That is correct.
And I understand that there was a waiver given to that strip center at one point?
Yes.
For parking, but that waiver has gone away, will go away with the splitting of that property?
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct. I mean, yes, we're, we're showing a shortage of seventy-four spaces for the entire three developments added together. The prior waiver just for this one shopping center alone was for ninety-one parking spaces. So we're, we're looking at just seventy-four would be for all three is what we're short for the parking.
Okay. I just wanted to understand that.
Sure.
When you were addressing earlier a, a concern about the traffic flow on southbound Southfield Road, you were talking about a partial remedy at least for the, the situation you were talking about was the right on the red.
Yes.
I didn't see you address at all a concern that I expressed last week about the turn lane north of Twelve Mile Road on Southfield Road. The turn lane for people that want to go, that are traveling south on Southfield Road and want to go east and turn left when you're going south. That's, that turn lane oftentimes is stacked up past Edwards Street. And so people that are going north on Southfield Road that want to turn east, I mean, west into this strip center and Walmart will have no place to stack.
Yeah. Sure.
Is there any, any thought on that?
And again, I, I know you're basing all of this on existing. What is there right today? And the only thing I can-
And are you doing anything to correct that?
Absolutely. For instance, those right turn overlaps are going to provide some additional capacity at that intersection.
In the left turn lane?
Absolutely. The signal, from by revising the signal timing as well. Plus, we, we are going to have a newer signal there. I mean, the signal will operate better than it currently does. As I used the analogy last, last week, it's like going from a, maybe a flip cell phone to maybe a smartphone. It's obviously going to be a much smarter intersection than what we currently have. And I think I used the, for instance, last week, and if you go out to that intersection, you sit there and you, you wonder, why is one leg backing up more than the other? Well, you know, there's some timing modifications and changes that do need to be made to that intersection. Now, using the SCAT system, which is the video camera detection, that is supposed to pick up where, you know, queue lengths are occurring and, and automatically adapt the timing to give more time to those legs of the intersection. If you go out to the intersection right now, it's not quite working that way. You know, they're, they're, the leg, maybe the north leg might be queuing up more than, say, the east leg. Well, what this new intersection will do is it will place the video detection around the intersection on the four poles. It'll better space it and it will provide for a much better operation.
Is it there a SCAT system there now?
There is a SCAT system, but again, it's mounted, basically mounted on a couple of poles.
It can't function very well when, when the, when the traffic's too heavy because it's not doing it, is it?
Yeah. Well, I think that's the reason for the new, why we're proposing a new signal.
And the new system is a SCAT system that has new lights on it?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, that's not convincing me that you're impressed.
Well, you can, you can see here, again, you know, this is what we're looking at. You know, the cameras will be mounted-
It's just the pole, okay?
Well, you, you also space out your signal head and you put in a new controller, an entirely new controller that is modernized. I mean, there's a reason that the county goes around and modernizing, modernizes a lot of these intersections. Am I telling you this intersection is going to improve two levels of service? Absolutely not. Will it mitigate Walmart's impact? Yes.
You mentioned also earlier that, if I, if I heard you correctly, I'm not sure, that Walmart would be contributing less than five percent additional traffic to Southfield Road. Is that what I heard?
To the Southfield, the Twelve Mile Road intersection.
To the intersection.
To the intersection.
So that's going both ways?
That's correct.
Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
And what, how much, how much, how many vehicles does that, does that five percent amount to? Twenty-three hundred?
Yeah, it's approximately that in a twenty-four hour period. It'd be-
Bad, I didn't hear that.
It'd be approximately a hundred vehicles an hour, on average.
A hundred vehicles an hour times twenty-four? I don't know.
Yeah, it'd be twenty-four hundred vehicles. The ADT or the total twenty-four hour traffic for the store would be approximately twenty-four hundred vehicles in, twenty-four hundred vehicles out. During a twenty-four hour period.
So that's forty-eight hundred vehicles?
Total, yes.
To that intersection?
Well, not all of them go to that intersection.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to-
I know. I, I mean, it's a-
Because there's forty-eight thousand vehicles on Southfield Road every day.
I believe you.
And fifteen thousand on Twelve Mile? Is that right, Robert?
Yes. That's about eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand on Twelve Mile, forty-eight thousand on Southfield Road. Today. What we're saying is that we're going to generate another twenty-four hundred inbound and outbound for about five percent to that intersection. And what Robert's describing with the traffic signal is, the traffic signal improvements will far outweigh the mitigation of that. So our impact, we're assuming, is going to be more than offset by the signal improvement. Now, whether it vastly improves the existing situation or not, it's not a conversation that we can have. I mean, that's something that you've got to have with your road commission and you've got to have with your city council members and that's a whole other issue. We think it'll be better. We think the new signal and the right turns in particular will be a lot better. But we're trying to tell you is that we are proposing, what we have proposed here, it's going to do everything we can do to mitigate our impact on that intersection. Both from the traffic inside the intersection, what Robert described with moving those access points as far away from the intersection as we can possibly get. To your point earlier about a northbound traveler that wants to turn left to go into Walmart, my answer to that is why wouldn't they be in the left turn lane south of Twelve Mile and utilize the left turn lane to make the left turn movement and then turn right into Walmart? As opposed to going through Southfield Road to turn left against a queue that's backed up?
They don't know it's backed up till they get there.
And, and-
And some people won't know that on their first trip. And when they go on their second trip, they will. And if they're there at five o'clock on a Friday afternoon, they're going to be in trouble. And if they're there at four o'clock on a Saturday, it may be way different.
What we can do for next, what we can do for next week too, is we can show you a slide that shows what Walmart is projecting at this intersection. For instance, you may quickly do the math and say, that sounds like close to ten percent. But vehicles coming out of here, say there's twenty percent traffic coming to and from the east, they're, they're not going to exit here, go to this signal, turn right onto Twelve Mile and go this way. They're going to come out here. That's twenty percent traffic that, that will not cross that intersection. Same thing here. A lot of this traffic coming from the east is going to turn left into here. It will not go through this intersection. So if, if you try to do a quick math and say, well, forty-eight hundred versus sixty-five thousand, that's about eight percent right there. But not all of those vehicles are going to go through this intersection. And again, another thing to note, and I keep saying it, the pass by traffic is going to be very important for the site. With a big major generator, carrier of traffic like Southfield Road, it carries over forty-eight thousand vehicles per day, there is going to be, we downgraded twenty-four percent, it could be as much as thirty-five percent pass by trips. They're going to come off of the existing traffic. It would be not counted as new trips. So next week, we will have a slide that just shows what percentage of traffic goes through that intersection, if that would help.
Well, I know, I'm familiar with the term pass by traffic.
Sure.
I'm not a hundred percent sure that I agree with everybody's definition of it. Because just like when I go, when I want to leave the house on any day, Saturday for instance, to go grocery shopping, and I want to go to the post office and I want to go to three other places because I want to conserve energy, mine as well as my automobile. But, and so you can call that a pass by visit if you want to, but I intended to go to Walmart.
Then that wouldn't be a pass by trip.
And I intended to go to the post office.
You would be a new trip.
So I didn't pass by any of those. And I went there because I wanted to go there.
And, and next week as well, I'll actually have the definition on a slide of pass by because the only way I can simply explain it is if, if you're going home tonight and you're not intending leaving tonight and going straight to a Walmart, you're just intending to go home. But all of a sudden, you see the Walmart and all of a sudden you say, oh, you know, I have to pick up, I don't know, something for the kids. That's not a new trip. That's a pass by trip. You were not destined for Walmart. Now, if you leave this meeting and you say, ah, I gotta hurry and run to Walmart because I need to pick something up, you're a new trip. You're not a pass by trip. So if that, if that can be understood, there is going to be a significant amount of pass by trips generated by this store on Southfield Road alone.
I'm hard pressed to believe that, that it's going to be a lot of pass by trips. People, people will indeed stop by Walmart on the way home. But it won't be because, oh, I need to get milk.
The only thing I can state to the, to the planning commission is we, we have tools in traffic engineering. The study that we did follows those recommended tools. And the tool that we use is the Institute of Transportation Engineers Eighth Edition Trip Generation Manual. That is the tool. It's nationally accepted. They show as much as twenty-eight percent pass by trips. We use twenty-four percent in this analysis. That is what we can go by. That is more than fair and adequate for this analysis. And I think the road commission, I believe city staff as well, concur with how the trip generation and pass by trips were done for this study.
I, I can't disagree with a, a study like that at all. I do disagree with how it came about because I live there.
Sure.
And I know what happens there.
Sure.
And, and I know for a fact that anything we put there is going to generate more traffic.
Sure.
Anything.
Sure.
And this is such an intense development for that corner, it's going to be awful traffic wise. I know that. And, and to, and to paint it as it's not, it's going to be improved, is just deceiving.
Well, I think the only thing we're painting is we're trying to mitigate what impact Walmart would be doing. That's, that's all we're trying to paint. Are we saying that we're going to improve that intersection where it's free flow? We're not saying that. But I understand your concern. Thank you.
Ready, anybody else?
I would like to-
One thing I got a question too.
One thing I got a question, too. I know you have a pickup point and drop-off point for your trucks, but how about for customers? I know you have a large online presence. Do people order online and pick up at the store?
Yeah, we have Walmart.com does it in order to compete particularly with folks like Amazon that get a 6% competitive advantage against us by not collecting Michigan sales tax. What Walmart.com does, there's a number of options. You can ship to store is basically how it works. So if you're going to a niece's birthday party, for example, and you decide you're going to get her a present for the birthday, there are a couple of options you can do. When you go onto Walmart.com, you can have it shipped directly right here to your hometown Southfield Walmart store. Or if they happen to live in Troy or Rochester, one of the other locations, rather than picking it up at the Walmart store in your hometown of Southfield, you might want to have it shipped to your niece's hometown. So then, rather than you and your wife and the kids load up with the big boys, go in the car, and then drive to the niece's home, you load everybody up in the car like we all do. And then when you get into town, wherever that might be, Rochester, etc., you stop by that local Walmart and actually pick up the items. We don't have specifically designed, like, you know, parking for that pickup in the parking lot. So if you do that, you order it online, you have it shipped to that store, whether it's the Southfield store, the Troy store, or wherever it may be, you pull in the parking lot, just like any other customer. If it's a good day and you get a front row spot, you pull in the front row and you walk right into the store. If it's a more busy day, like we'll be experiencing at our stores over the next week, you may be parking further back. In a circumstance like that, I mean, there is area up front where, you know, you may drop your wife off in the front of the store, she'll get out and go into the store. You go back and park, and then when she comes back out. But those are all movements that customers do at retail locations across. It's not specific to our location.
Do you anticipate less traffic actually coming to the store as opposed to online ordering in the future?
I mean, it's really hard to do the math on the online, and like I said, particularly with the competitive advantage that a lot of the online retailers have, that 6% price difference does matter. And, I mean, if we were having this conversation 10 years ago, I think our conversation about online sales would be much different than it is today. So where it's going to be 10 years from now, the company's doing, you know, like every other retailer, we're trying to compete in the market. There's more convenience for the customer. For all I know, the folks in Bentonville are working on a ship-to-home program for Walmart.com. I don't know where it's going to be 10 years from now. There is a lot more traffic online, and that does change the way we have to respond to our customers and the people.
I would assume there's going to be less foot traffic into the stores, is that my whole point?
In the future? In the future, you know, it will be. But, you know, at the same time, I don't think it's a likely scenario for me to have a gallon of milk shipped to my house. So where, you know, where that starts to draw, where the line starts to draw, you know, when I was, when I grew up and put in township, I worked for a home food service delivery company. So we delivered everything but bread eggs and milk right to your house. Those were the only things you ever had to leave.
Okay. I'm going to take a couple of follow-up commissioners outside of BMO's. Commissioner Lagan?
Do you have any bike racks located outside?
We do. They're on the west portion of the store in front of, more towards the home and garden area. And again, the access point there was, is designed more particularly with that walkable access to the neighborhood that we described last week. That individuals walking, or, you know, kids on a bike, or whatever, that come to the store to that access point, the bike rack should be closest to that location.
The other item that I was thinking is that since it's a shared parking agreement, there should probably be some type of pedestrian access near the, where the Kensei Quanzi restaurant is, probably up in there, because, you know, this, I think this development could energize that center. And that parking, I think, you know, where they did have the existing parking over there, it might make sense to add some type of pedestrian access from that area. It looks like there's a little sidewalk that kind of wraps around the side of that building, maybe?
Yeah, there would be a sidewalk. What they would have to do is basically come right down here, walk along the walkway, and up right up to the store. The parking right now, we felt it was very important to get as much green space along the west property line as possible, and we put a lot of trees there. And we could have taken those trees out, put a walkway along there. But to have a walkway down through the middle, again, we're really squeezed on parking right now. But they do have access to this sidewalk right here, and this is going to be a brand-new sidewalk along Southfield, and then a brand-new sidewalk along 12 Mile Road. So they could come right over to here, walk down this sidewalk, and right up into the store.
Basically, what I'm talking about is like, if you look at the lower-left corner of that, let's say, upper box, you know?
This up here?
Yeah. So the lower-left corner of that building there?
Right here?
No, down, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, right there. If you just had like, maybe a painted access across from there to over to that other parking on the asphalt. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Oh, a pedestrian walkway across, headward drive.
Yeah, just a pedestrian, you know, painted access, you know? It doesn't have to, you know, it could go into one of those curbs or, you know, landscape beds.
Another question we'll certainly look at.
Just to kind of provide an access.
Sure.
Because I know that, you know, it could probably be, you know, busy traffic, you know? People feel a little more comfortable that they might have to run over and walk.
Couple compliments on the environmentally friendly features. I'm a big recycling advocate and a renovating advocate. That's something we strongly suggest whenever we tear a building down, is to recycle as much as possible and reuse as much as possible. So glad to hear that. I think you're a big and powerful enough company to make sure that happens with the contract and everything, so. That's really a good thing for me. LED lighting is great, you know, it's the latest technology. It saves so much energy, significant upfront costs that, again, I'm glad to see you're taking that out. I think it's going to be a good standard for, you know, future development that follows. And then, I did drive by the Novi Town Center at Walmart, and I guess that's the most recent example or similar example. And it's a very nice building. Novi has very high design standards. And then I just wanted to say that this is above and beyond that, and a nicer design, and more upgraded. And I'm just, I'm happy to see that level of detail, extra material. Still along the same lines to the pedestrian spaces to the right of the entrance, and then small civic amenity out on 12 Mile Southfield Road. I think they're, they're going to generate more of that activity. Again, like I said, up at Tim Hortons and, you know, some of the shops right down the street here, there's a lot of action, and more action throughout the day, I think, is going to be a good thing for this city as we move forward.
Just to piggyback on Commissioner's comments, and I forgot to ask this before. Has Walmart implemented any vehicle charging stations in any of their buildings? Is that something you really consider?
Yeah, absolutely. It's something we could talk about. I know for the brand-new Warren location, and I think we talked about that maybe last week, I apologize, Mr. Chairman. We've got a store just two miles up the road from the old Warren site, and now we're adding a new site, a brand-new supercenter at the old Warren location. So we will have two operating supercenters within two miles of each other. Because of the proximity to the GM Tech Center, which is literally across Sandike Road from the new Warren location, or the rehab Warren location, they are putting, we're putting charging stations in that location. I think it's only four, but I'm, they're still working with, there's two separate centers that provide that. And last time I checked in with them, they were trying to pick one of those centers. But if that's something that Planning Commission or City Council would like us to look at, then that's something we can absolutely look at.
Thank you.
Let me take a couple of questions. You've been back here at it in quite a while.
I'm a 35-year resident of Southfield. My name's Colleen Bassett. And I wanted to tell the planning commission how excited I am about the possibility of this rezoning and getting Walmart. I mean, what can be better for our city? It's that ugly little corner we've been looking at for how many years? The sad property. We're going to get, we're going to get new landscaping. We're going to get new parking lots. We're going to get new streetlights. I mean, and besides that, I like Walmart. It's a good reputable company. I mean, we need to look at these. I asked my planning commission to listen to how many, how Walmart is trying to address residents' needs. They're doing excellent jobs. And I ask you to keep your minds open. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for Southfield.
Thank you. Your comments in a bit here.
I'm Harvey Dunster, 91122. I'm president of the Panthers of the Walmart Association. We have no real concerns about Walmart being able to accept you. Next year, we have a low price range in this area. We'd like to keep it. And one way to keep it, another way is not to keep it open 24 hours. We make it easy for people to come in and out of the store after midnight. I would hate to see bad guys come in through the sidewalk after midnight into our neighborhood. We're making it easier by making a cut through out of the funeral home parking lot. We have concerns about people coming through the shared parking or the driveway and turning on the light street, and then also putting it on the concrete and making the left turn there to get on the sidewalk going left. That's going to be a big traffic problem for our neighborhood. We're not talking about backup on the here at the corner on the shared driveway. We're talking about backup in the residential area. So, you know, I like to keep my neighbors nice and safe. And that's, the only way I can see that happening is to not have some sort of a store. You already have eight stores in this area that are not 24 hours, and they're not hurting the business. I don't see why you have to keep this store open 24 hours.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Couple of questions. I've only been in Southfield next year will be, I don't know, I think it's been about 30 years. I haven't been here quite as long as you've been.
You're a newcomer.
I'm a newcomer, only 30 years. Now, we had a planner to come into the city and talk about our city standards and businesses not going where they want to go, but where they will be best suited. Now, everybody is talking about now, all of a sudden, how bad this 12 Mile and Southfield corner is looking. Are you concerned about the fact that for over 20-plus years, Northland and our downtown area has been undeveloped? I think that this project would be better suited at Northland Mall to revitalize our downtown area, or possibly the old Home Depot on 8 Mile near JL Hudson's, or even the vacant building lot across the street. We cannot keep trying to cram all of these businesses because they think it's a good idea, because they give a corporate donation, because they give to the community. If you're willing to give to the community, if you are willing to be in Southfield because you're committed and you want to continue to do those things, go to an area where this, this business would be better suited. And it's a reason why you want to be on 12 and Southfield, because of the perception that people will come and shop with you. If you're concerned about the residents, take it to 8 Mile, take it to Northland Mall, revitalize that area, and be concerned about getting customers from the south of 8 Mile corridor.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to?
The last, I brought up the crime issue. And I wasn't concerned about what's in the store. I'm concerned about people leaving the store and traveling in our community. We're already having a few problems with people walking through our backyard. And when they're approached, they say, oh, we're looking for so-and-so. We've also had home invasions. And now we have a problem with rats because of the way that the Krogers closed up their food, I suppose, I don't know. So, and then you didn't address the issue of the traffic along 12 Mile between Evergreen and Southfield Road. It's hard to handle. We have two schools there, split the school area, two schools. And now you're finding a 24-hour service on one end and a 24-hour service on the other end. So our community is going to be like a north Detroit. Please, we moved here because we want a quiet residential area. And now, have you thought about the fact that there's Walmart about 10 minutes from us, and a Myers, they're open all night, over on Coolidge and Ford's and Brown's? It only takes 10 minutes to get there. And then what are they offering? Groceries, we have so many groceries doing it. Dusters, we have so many dusters. Soling, what about Target? We don't need any, we don't need that there. But I agree, Northland, or maybe Telegraph and Hightower, some of the areas, but not, not the residential area.
Okay, thank you.
We've known it. We might just open zones soon.
My name is Melvin Taylor. I live at 2922 Y Somerset, which is directly behind the Southfield funeral home. And the one thing I want to say to the planning commission is, I applaud you for hearing Walmart. I hope you put it there, because within that square area, there is nowhere for any senior citizens to get drugs, food, or anything else without crossing a major street. If children want to go to the store, they can't go without crossing a major street. So it's a safety hazard to have your store so distant that no one can get to. And if you don't have transportation, I'm sorry, you're not going to walk down to Evergreen or to Northland or anyplace else. There's no store in that square area amongst those busy streets where people can shop. And that area right now is an eye sore, and it's a public safety because there's a lot of blind spots, and there's nobody over there. I walk there all the time, and I see people back there. So if you don't develop it, something's going to happen. So I hope you take this positive attitude and a positive idea and place something there for the people in the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Congressman. Okay.
Okay. Speaking of whether it's Walmart or not, I live in the, directly adjacent to the wall, at the northwest corner of the parking lot. Okay. I went through this twice already, meetings. One with a funeral parlor. We were assured there'd be no problems at all with traffic or anything. The next thing was, this shopping center also, that before was, there was nothing there when I moved in. We were told it's going to be fine. I have called the police at 2 o'clock in the morning when they come to empty the dumpsters, and the police tell me it's not their job to do that. I have to catch the guy and go stand out there. Now, this is going to revitalize that shopping center like crazy. And there's going to be noise, and there's going to be garbage pickups all night long, because they're doing it now.
I think you addressed the garbage issue during his presentation. It's going to be a compactor.
I'm not talking to their garbage. I'm talking to garbage at the center that's going to revitalize, where the restaurant was and all these other empty stores. I mean, if I was a businessman, I'd move into that center without a question. And that, they pick up garbage at 2:00 in the morning, and the police won't do a thing about it. I had to go out there one night and catch the guy and get his truck number and turn him in to get anything done.
Okay.
Hi, Kerry James, 2804 Marshall Street. In regards to all the traffic and everything, I know Walmart transports people to their stores in different communities. Is that something that you're proposing to do for the Southfield location? And if so, how many transportation vehicles would be coming in and out of there? How many would be coming to the store?
What we did on this plan is, we actually, we, you know, looked at it with city staff as well, but we actually called the smart bus people up. And we're going to actually be putting in bus access points and actually, what do you call them? Shelters, shelters for, not only on the Southfield Road site, but on also the 12 Mile Road site. And they will have then walkway, concrete walkways to the store.
I can tell you exactly what I'm asking.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to address our question, I can. Walmart does at a number of our locations, we utilize both private providers and our own transportation. There are particularly some senior shelters in the city of Detroit. And what she's describing is, we work with groups that pull up a small bus at the actual senior center in Detroit. The seniors come out of their center, and again, as the gentleman over here described earlier, they don't have any walkable locations in the city of Detroit. So once a week, they get on the bus, and then the bus from the senior center drives to one of the store locations. And those individuals then are going to the store, do their shopping, maybe get their prescription drugs, whatever it might be, get back on the bus and come out. At this point, there are no plans to do that. But that doesn't mean that if this store is approved, by the planning commission approved by council, that a senior center that I'm not aware of in the community reaches out to the store manager and says, it's a wonderful program, we've got 300 seniors in this center that need, would you be interested in that? If that's the case, then- If that's the case, then what we do is we make arrangements with them for a drop off and a pickup time. And that's how the program works.
What usually is the frequency of something like that with you?
Like you said, I believe most of the groups that we work with, particularly in the city of Detroit, do once a week. But I, I'm sorry, I just don't know off the top of my head if like the, for example, the Luvonia store or the Roseville store, which had that proximity to Detroit, they could be doing one every day from like five different senior centers. I just don't know how that operates. But I mean, we could certainly, if the chairman would like, we can get some answers to that question and provide more specific details if you and commissioners would like that.
My name is Ann from Walmart. I live on Somerset Street. And I've been to several of these meetings. And I couldn't think of Walmart as quick to get a very professional presentation. However, Ms. Bass, I don't really live in the neighborhood. And I think it's important for the commission to understand that people who are showing up here and the people who have the concern that are coming meeting after meeting are those people who live within a stone's throw, within a quarter mile of the site that's going to be here. And one of the questions that I have is South Wester on the east side of the street is a shopping mall, it's just a farm shack, and it's owned by several owners. And I'm just wondering why that particular location wasn't being shown through the ride lot? Because people say this particular site is abandoned. However, no one has brought up the fact that the sheltering arms facility is basically going to close down. And I don't know with their relationship with the outside of Detroit, if they'd even feel comfortable showing up at a meeting like this to voice any of their concerns.
Thanks for your comments. Sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris Spencer again. Question for consideration by the commission. I talked, I hear a lot of numbers about your traffic projections and also security issues. My question, I'm looking at this location of the store. When I read in the sub-area, a part of the master plan was that this area was going to be developed to serve the general local area, like within, let's say, a one and a half mile radius. This store, if you look at where the other stores exist, a quarter is going to serve in probably four or five miles wide and go in north two miles. So, I'm sure south five or six miles, okay? Because there's no stores in that area. And that we talked about where some of those neighborhoods are. The discussion's made about some of these calculations. I mean, is anybody considering that? Or what is the real intended zone that this store is supposed to supply? Because I think it's going to bring a lot more people in than maybe somebody's putting on the table in this proposal, that's all. That's where I think we're all concerned about here is the traffic. It's just going to go crazy because maybe the numbers weren't calculated correctly.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Marilyn Booker. I live at 304 Nigel Woodstock. I'm the president of the Prime Wood Manor Homeowners Association. We're at Thirteen Mile east of Southfield Road. Our concern, the residents, because we had polled after we had heard about this project, everyone wanted to know, were there other sites that were considered? Because of the traffic currently at Twelve Mile and Southfield Road, we agree that, you know, we have various sites in the city of Southfield that need to be occupied. However, that particular intersection is already overburdened. And we agree that there needs to be traffic signal upgrades or some other type of activity to help control traffic. But right now, when you think about the traffic on Southfield Road from 696 to Thirteen Mile, I mean, it'd take us forever, you know? And, you know, you're just at the point the residents on that far end of the city, you know, say it's easier to go outside of the city of Southfield to handle your business. And I think, you know, we try to encourage our residents to stay within the city of Southfield to support the businesses, you know? But just that traffic congestion has created a major impasse.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're going to wrap this up. Commissioner, Commissioner Bell?
Yes, if I could, I'm not sure who to address here. Are there any Walmarts in the metropolitan area that are in an urban setting like this?
Mr. Chair, we have a number of, number of locations with equal population density, if not greater than this location.
Well, I'm talking about the density that this particular site is and where are they?
Okay, I mean, for this site in particular, particularly with the proximity to 696, the brand-new Warren location would be, I mean, probably dead set on to this project. And the reason I say that, Mr. Chairman, is you've got direct proximity to 696. You've got a major thoroughfare in Van Dyke Avenue that carries multiple thousands of vehicles through the course of the day, both from Warren residents and Sterling Heights residents and residents throughout the area. It's also at the intersection of Twelve Mile, which we all know is, I've been told, is the alternate route for 696 in these meetings. So, I'm assuming it's the alternate route for 696 in Southfield, that it's similarly the alternate route for 696 in Warren. And it also has the immediate proximity to residential homes that this proposed site would have in that there are both to the north, unlike this one, which is just one to the immediate west of the location. The Warren store has homes immediately abutting the property to the north and then also far east of the same complex. That's probably close, population density, traffic, et cetera.
Could you tell me what size lot that sits on?
It's a pretty large, it's, it's, it's an old development that was built back in the sixties, I think. And it, that location itself is a, it's kind of one of the older shopping malls that you would, you would have found in most of the metropolitan Detroit urban areas. So, it's kind of an L-shaped shopping plaza with a couple of standalone locations right in front. There is an Applebee's restaurant and a, it might be a Tim Hortons in the physical property line of it. There is an existing Old Country buffet in that plaza.
Can you tell me approximately how many acres it is?
It's a pretty large parcel, but it's a pretty unique development in that technically Walmart owns the, will own the entire parcel. Will be developing the far west side of that property. And then the balance of the complex itself, we're assuming at some point, will be sold to another developer at any day.
So, you can't have, have the, how large is it?
It's twenty, it's like twenty-seven acres. But there's another 230,000 feet of retail with it.
Another good example would be Roseville at Twelve Mile and Grashit. It's a site maybe even goes a little tighter than this in terms of size. There's no rest locations around that. Could you give me, you said it's probably a tighter than this? Could you give me some figures that I can visualize? I, we can certainly work that up. It's a shopping center, it's an existing shopping center. There are other retailers in that shopping center. So, the Walmart's perlop size, I think, is maybe nine acres. But it's integrated with the shopping center. And, and what is the square footage? And I need to verify this, but I'm pretty sure it's. And what is the square footage of the Walmart? Walmart right now is being, is going through an expansion. It's been approved for expansion. Robert, what's the size at 155,000 feet, 156? It's a little bit larger than what we're proposing here. Maybe on a little bit less land area, but it's integrated with a shopping center adjacent.
I'm having other examples. Troy, Dearborn, the proposed Lincoln Park site are all very similar in popularity. And we will get those numbers next week. I mean, we can have the exact square footage, the exact acreage, so we're talking specifics. Just like, just like we did this week. We'll have a follow-up slide on questions that were asked tonight and follow-up, very much like we did this week.
I'm just trying to visualize an existing facility that is this size or whatever size and how it functions. Because I'm having difficulty with this size of facility functioning well on this piece of property. They're going to have to be a parking waiver granted in order, in order to meet the parking requirements of the ordinance. And, and one of the shared parking entities, the funeral home, the way our parking requirements are written in the ordinance only requires forty-seven spaces, when that is an absurdity as far as what he actually needs, as you can tell about what he's expanding to. And so, that's one of my biggest concerns is that you don't meet the zoning ordinance in parking.
If I could ask that you keep an open mind, obviously ninety.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my head around it. I'm just asking questions.
In terms of this comment, a ninety-one space parking waiver was granted for the smaller portion of the shopping center. We would be requesting a seventy-four space parking waiver for the entire three, three part, you know, three entities, the funeral home, the Walmart, and the remaining shopping center. There was a ninety-one space waiver that's granted just for this small shopping center. So, we're, we're just going to be requesting a seventy-four space parking waiver. And as far as the, the city's code for the Walmart, obviously, it's a much higher parking standard than what Walmart requires. Walmart looks at, you know, around, you know, four spaces per thousand square feet. And I think the city's code looks at about 6.66. So, it's, it's much higher. So, keep that in mind as well. But again, we would be requesting a seventy-four space parking waiver.
Mr. Chair, just to respond to that comment, we did talk about, there is a possibility if they remove interior landscaping and car rails and stuff, they could get more parking.
That's correct.
I wouldn't recommend that because I think our parking standards are accessible. The standard is one to four, one to every 250 feet or four to a thousand. Ours is in the six to a thousand range. And I'd rather have the trade-off of additional landscaping and better circulation on Sunday. So, Walmart is able to get closer to what is required on paper. And that all has to be considered by the zoning regulations. But in this particular case, I think we, we know our standards are overparted in many cases. I'd rather have the landscaping and get close to what the standards are and make sure that it works more importantly than just meet, meet the, you know, exact requirement of the paper. And that's for a further discussion. And again, I want to remind the, the audience that two weeks from tonight is our official public hearing. We'll be at the city council chambers. And that's the opportunity, you will have an opportunity to actually make your official comments. Today, we're a study session and did want to open up some comments so that we can address those before our next meeting. I know Robert referenced next week, we're actually meeting two weeks from tonight.
What is the date of that meeting?
The 28th of November. It'll be at 6:30 and it'll be in the city, city hall proper in the large council chambers. And residents will be given up to five minutes to make their comments at the public hearing. After, after the public hearing and if the planning commission makes a recommendation, there'll be further opportunity for you to come to public meetings that the city council will be holding for the course of another couple of months. So, this is not the final, you know, final opportunity to make comments. And the commission is a recommending body. And you will have an opportunity to make official comments. We also will accept any written comments. And we'll make sure that they're part of the record if you don't feel comfortable speaking in public. And you can do it both ways. You can, you can direct your comments through, through the planning department and we'll make sure they're made part of the record. And that will move forward with the tactics of the city council. And if I could, to the chair, I'm going to recommend that we take a five-minute recess and reconvene in the council study room for our last item. And I will be doing a PowerPoint presentation on the overlay development district that we'll be considering over the next couple of months. Public is welcome to join us, but we're only going to be dealing with the overlay district and we're only going to be taking about fifteen, fifteen minutes of an introduction. But we'll be discussing that in detail in your next meeting.
One question. Are the minutes available online or something over this meeting?
And to the chair, just a really, really quick question. I don't normally agree with Commissioner Bell, but I see people on Target about that light because I read your traffic study and you guys said in the traffic study you made a big deal about putting a new traffic light there. And if you're only going to put a new decorative pole there and it's the same system now, not alleviating the problem, why do you think that would resolve the issue there?
It's not just a new thing. It's a controller, it's a white overlap, it's a baby, it's new everything.
Everything was about to be put on that one mile corridor and a camera on the front. And it's not right medium.
What's that? Oh, man. I'm averaging eight hundred bucks an hour.
I was in there.
Eight hundred bucks an hour?
Who has been in there?
I know.
How many wings you have to get, get filled up? I've been there. Have you been to Wingstop about that long? I got, I know, I want some food. I went, I've been in there.
I did one night. I actually, I went to Wingstop. I got my wings to go. I went to Billy Sims. I got my ribs to go. And I had a feast at home.
Well, I know, did you actually got your ribs at Billy's there?
Okay, I'm glad to talk. We'll reconvene the meeting at 8:55. And this is the presentation that I gave the city council a couple of weeks ago. And tonight's just an overview. We're going to study this in December when we don't have all this other stuff. And we'll make sure that you did, I think there was a draft copy in your, in your book. I think we've got some tweaking to do. So, we're here to talk about overlay development district regulations. And we're considering three potential areas. And these are sub-areas that have been identified in the master plan. So, we're consistent with what the master plan indicated. The Telegraph Technology Corridor along Telegraph Road, the City Center District, and the Downtown Development Authority District. Perceptions, and this is, this is why, you know, we have to look at creating some new development tools in our toolbox. Older cities have accumulated a set of policies and practices that belong to the approval process. And these factors deter potential investors into that new investment that is essential to their continued viability. Challenging, older cities struggle to attract new investment because of complexity associated with redevelopment. Higher development costs and greater risk investing in older cities. It's the old greenfield versus brownfield development. Why do people go out into the countryside? Because there's, you know, they can start from scratch. They're not dealing with contamination, not dealing with demolition of buildings, not dealing with even neighbors complaining about redevelopment in many cases. And many urban communities, including first-rate suburbs like Southfield, have numerous underutilized properties in convenient urban locations, St. Pete's property. Okay, developers, these are some, these are general comments to developers that uncharted territory equals uncharted results. Cities must help set a clear path. Developers want to know what the process is and that if they complete all the boxes, that they will get an approval. It's the uncertainty that deters future development. Cities must think out the process in advance. They need to do their homework and update regulations and tools. And to the developer, time is money. Developers also know that density is the main smart growth tool. So, when communities can provide greater density, it leverages their development costs and encourages redevelopment. Developers say that the cities must pay attention to market needs and trends. So, having an old set of standards based on something that was thirty, forty years ago is not flexible. They don't like overregulation. They want to integrate transparency, predictability, and efficiency in the process. That's really important to developers. And they want to be partners with the community. I've talked in the past about demographic shift, both residential and young professionals. They don't work or shop the way we, we grew up. People, again, in the old days, industry was located where resources or highway transportation networks like railroads or waterways were located. Young professionals now go to places they want to live in and then look for a job. My son is, again, an example, someone who just graduated. He doesn't have an office. They send him to their client companies and he sits at a conference table or they give him two, two days a week where he can. Retailers, generally, the trend is that their size is shrinking because online shopping is going up. But people still want to see the product, touch it, feel it, sit in it. And so, the retailers are moving more to showrooms with online. And we have to be flexible and try to stay ahead of some of these changes. Climate adaptation. We can stand here all night and argue the reasons for climate change, whether it's man-made or it's just a cycle. But statistically, our climate is changing. And what happened with storm, Superstorm Sandy? I was at the APA National Conference in Boston a year and a half ago, and the planners from New York showed a scary scenario of exactly what happened. They were showing major rain events where the water was going down into the subways and into the tunnels. They knew that the sea level was rising. And they said that Manhattan, God help them, they're hoping they had ten, twenty, thirty years to deal with it. This scenario that I saw was almost a forecast of what's happened two weeks ago in Sandy. And it's going to have dramatic effects even in our community, in our climate, because we're going to have more extreme weather conditions. We're going to have more freeze fall, which is going to affect our roadway systems. Low-impact design is going to be important to try to mitigate from the stormwater. We've already seen our landscape climate zone change by one complete zone to the warmer side. And these are all things as planners and commissioners, and I have to keep in mind. Sustainability is kind of one of the hot buzzwords nowadays. And it's not just about environmental sustainability, it's about social and economic sustainability. Placemaking and creating a sense of place is important. Even the top guys now at NISTDA, Michigan's state housing authority, they're using these terms. They know that affordable housing and putting money into a specific project is no good if you don't address the bigger picture, the neighborhood and the community. And I was recently up at the state conference in Traverse City. Their downtown has less than a two percent vacancy rate for retail, and yet they have no parking requirements in their downtown district. They either, as a public entity, they provide public parking, or the developers provide underground parking or onsite parking based on their own needs. There's no standards. And you say, how could they have less than two percent vacancy and have such density and not require any parking? Because they think outside the box and they deal with it in a different way. And I only use that as an example about having stringent standards. One site sits out, doesn't work all the time. And I showed this to the council, what are we talking about? What does this all look like? And to create this kind of density with mixed-use development, with retail on the first floor and office, residential above, hotel complex, shared parking, parking garages, walkable community, we need to adapt. Our regional center does allow some mixed use, but has a lot of limitations. You can have retail, but no more than ten percent of the floor area, and it has to serve the building of the people that are located. We still have these exorbitant parking standards and requirements that require developers to build a sea of asphalt around our buildings. And especially in areas of higher density like the DDA and the city center, we want to be more flexible. We don't want these rigid fifty-foot setbacks from the front yard. We want to encourage this type of on-street development with parking and shared parking and parking garages and walkability. And again, you know, what does this look like at the ground level? It shows diversity, it shows walkability, it shows biking, low-impact design, LED lighting, bio swales, bike parking, mixed-use retail, and a place that people want to be, want to shop, want to live, go to school, and want to work. And these are, again, just examples of what vision could create if we had the tools in place. So, the overlay development district is a set of regulations. It includes a definition section, a purpose intended qualifications, uses permitted and uses prohibited, rezoning procedure, and site plan approval and construction. The purpose is to encourage development and redevelopment, to provide flexibility, to foster creativity, and preserve desirable features such as natural, historic, and architectural. It modifies traditional form of zoning. It permits variety in design. And things like setback layout, parking, uses and signage are treated on a case-by-case basis. So, if under conventional zoning, you're required to have two hundred fifty parking spaces, but you know you have a parking garage within walking distance, and you want a greater flexibility, you allow the density, reduce the parking, reduce the setbacks for high-quality design and for more mixed use, that's the trade-off. And each case is negotiated between the developer and the city. It encourages efficiency of use of land so you can get more built on the parcels than our traditional suburban model, and also ensures compatibility with surrounding land uses. In return for greater flexibility, we expect exceptional quality design, above-average pedestrian amenities, creative design and layout of buildings, focus on pedestrian space and circulation, significant architectural features, compatibility with land uses, and provide greater efficiency of the site overall. The intent is to encourage innovation of land uses and variety of design, to promote low-impact design, permit flexibility in the placement of setbacks, parking lot area, et cetera, again, to encourage pedestrian amenities, to improve the public infrastructure, promote more sustainable and a healthy community because it's going to promote walking, achieve coordinated site design. We don't have design guidelines for architecture, but this gives us the flexibility to require higher standards on our architecture, and ultimately to encourage redevelopment. What I'm proposing, there's a standard set of lists, where we looked at each of these districts and looked at what the underlying zoning currently permits. We scaled that back to desirable uses. And what I'm going to propose, we work through, is developing a table and a chart that says certain uses would be permitted in the Telegraph Road Corridor because that's more encouraged for high-tech research, that would be different than the city center. And the city center and the DDA would probably be more similar, but there might be certain uses that we want to either encourage or discourage in each of those districts. We might not want to encourage gas stations in our city center district, and therefore we would prohibit them even if they're currently allowed in a B-three district. Or, we say, you can have the gas station, but we're not going to give you the flexibility of all these other tools if you want to develop under conventional zoning. And those are some of the things that we need to work out as a commission before we recommend back to City Council. So, the rezoning procedure is the same. An application would come in, preliminary review by the planning department. Planning commission would have their study sessions, hold their public hearing, and make a recommendation to City Council. Then the City Council would either approve this rezoning or deny it. But if they approve it, there'll be a set of standards that if they approve that are specific to that site only. And it's similar to a consent judgment in the sense that there's some give and take. Unlike conditional zoning, which is more of a one-way zoning, where the developer says, this is what I'm willing to do, either take it or leave it. This is a true negotiated document that gets laid out in part and parcel to the rezoning. So, instead of rezoning just a B-three, which allows all these uses, we are saying, we're going to rezone overlay development district for this specific use or uses with these specific conditions on the site. And that document gets recorded and is part and parcel to that approval. And then, the applicant has the comfort, the developer has the comfort of saying, now I know what the standards are, I know I will get approved if I meet these standards, and it cuts down the timeline of the final review. So, that's really the beauty of it. There's a master development agreement, as I talked about, that both legal, planning, and the developer negotiate and develop the draft with input from the commission that ultimately gets approved by the City Council. There's a procedures for major or minor modifications, and that there's performance guarantees that we can attach to this development agreement. Construction has to begin within eighteen months after receiving final engineering approval. And multi-phase developments have to start within twenty-four months of that final engineering approval. Otherwise, it reverts back to the original zoning that it has. So, it says, we're not going to give you this approval forever. If you don't start and meet our guidelines, if you're not serious about development, if you don't have your money in place, you will lose this approval. So, it encourages that developer to go through this process and be willing to put the shovel on the ground in the short term. And I put this slide in here just to kind of pose the question to the City Council that when our city was developed fifty-five years ago, for whatever reason, they decided that our model was going to be city of progress. And it has served us well for a long time. We wouldn't have those tall buildings over there, we wouldn't have some of the unique things that makes Southfield unique compared to other communities if we didn't think in the future, if we weren't forward-thinking. And I think lately, we've been thinking too much in the past. And as I said in the beginning part of my presentation, we need to be thinking in the future because the future's changing so quickly. We need to be one step ahead of everyone so that we can be competitive with our other communities who are still in the seventies and the eighties. A lot of communities want more than two-story buildings. They wanted to keep it low-level. And again, we were progressive because we allowed these tall buildings to be built next to me. We said that we wanted that density, and we wanted to be competitive in the workforce. I'm saying now, we need to look at these other tools to make us competitive in these, you know, tough economic times.
I was just thinking about that. I was wondering about what happens when, let's say, one of these developers gets these waivers or special grants, like my approval and things, and what happens to the next one? You know, let's say, maybe they go out business or something. Do all those grants get transferred to the next developer of that property?
If the sequence and the timing meets within our thresholds, then it would carry on. But if the council doesn't grant an extension, then it reverts back. And so, then the new developer would almost have to start from scratch. And that's the protection, that if you're unable to carry this through, if you can't build it the way it is, and it doesn't get built in a reasonable time period, it reverts back.
Yeah, so let's say they build it for ten years, and then, you know, somebody else wants, you know, for some reason, they're gone, somebody else wants to build it, take over that property.
Well, it would be no different than-
All of those still transferred, stay in that property for some-
Well, yeah, because the site is an existing conforming site. If they were to redevelop the site, then they'd have to meet the standards, or they'd have to come back and go through the process again. I think the scenario might be if, let's say, it's a phase project, and they built phase one, and they just don't have the money, and there's a long delay before phase two took place. The City Council could revert it back to the original zoning, and they either have to conform to conventional zoning or they have to go through the process again. Now, if a new developer came in to build phase two, and it was within the twenty-four month period, then those standards would still be good for them to move forward.
I can understand the developer's perspective on it, and how they want to be insured that, okay, I spent, let's say, almost a million dollars in all this research, time, and development for this big project to go through, and then, at the end of the day, there's no guarantee. So, I mean, that's kind of what they want, and that's kind of what we're giving them life.
That's plus flexibility, okay? So, they don't have to worry necessarily about going to a, at the end of the process, going to get fifteen waivers from the DDA. Or they don't have to worry about other things that don't work, or being short on... Well, the biggest thing for me is the flexibility of mixed uses. Because right now, they're hampered by, I only can do ten percent of retail, and because the rest of this, the market doesn't support ninety percent housing and ten percent retail. You know, and that's what our current ordinances are limiting. We got the development down the street, too, where you got small parcels for redevelopment. You know, Jeff will tell me, you put a fifty-foot setback around the whole building, your building is only going to be five thousand square feet. This doesn't make sense, especially when we want to encourage. We can't build a second story and mix the uses because this use is allowed in B-one, and this use is allowed in OS, and this use is allowed in RC. And RC, you have to have a ten-acre minimum. We're discouraging small development and redevelopment on our parcels, especially in these districts. And we're only talking about in these districts because they have special, unique characteristics. They're more walkable, they're higher density, there's more office workers, and so forth.
Would be any provision in there when they have their timeline, eighteen months or twenty-four, if they give probable cause or whatever, that this happened, that happened, can we get an extension? Would that be something-
We look at if there's a legitimate attempt to move the project along, and for whatever reason, they dig and they find an Indian burial ground, which causes them, you know, nine months of delay or something. That's within reason. But if they just start pushing dirt around, just staying in the timeline, and no one's trying to building, then the City Council could revoke that. We can start a procedure for revoking that.
Right.
I think the idea, too, is, first of all, this is awesome, and it's exactly what I want to see, especially right here in the city center district. But the idea is, once this gets going, it's going to make sense. Like, why do you want to go to this area? Because it's busy, there's people there with money. There's already this built, I want to be next to them. Then when I'm there, now this person wants to come in, now everyone wants to live there. Then it's cool, then it makes money.
He's a magnet.
And I point across the street, you know, why is that site staying vacant for so long? Well, when you get developers coming in, they're limited in what they could build there and how it's got to be built, especially in the tough economic times, it just makes it even less likely that someone's going to take a chance and build anything there for like two dollars. You know? Just looking at a small scenario, you know, retail is going at twenty-four, twenty-six dollars a square foot. But the second story for office is around sixteen dollars a square foot. For housing, it might be even less. When you start putting a second story on there, you got to put an elevator on, you get space for common space. It's not economically viable for somebody to take that leap and just build a two-story building. Then you start adding more stories on it, then it starts recovering the cost, so you can have a larger footprint. That ground space lease helps pay for the other improvements on the site. And then, if you don't have to pay the whole thing in parking, and able to pick up so many people walking there, then it gives you more square footage to get more rent to help. You know, it's a cyclic thing.
No, I'm just going to say, I echo your sentiment about, it's about time that we saw something like this as well, because my intent when I moved to Southfield was the location is convenient for the outlying areas, your Royal Oaks, your Novi, your Detroit's, whatever. But if you're moving here, you're still traveling outside the boundaries of the city. So, for a person like me who wants to live and work and do things in my community, something like this will help, like you said, grow that, that notion will help provide the businesses, it will help keep people here versus people always traveling out. Because the guy in Walmart, being made a good point, which is, senior citizens or people who don't have transportation, your community should be someplace that you want to be able to walk in, and the business should be there. So, I think this is something that's very important, especially, like you said, in those areas. And this vacant land that we have here, why aren't we, like in Royal Oak or Novi or Ferndale or whatever, we have the space, why not use it appropriately? Sorry.
I'm going to say, I'm going to go twice for one response, but when I used to do a lot of conceptual design when people used to build buildings in Michigan, you know, that was always the first thing, go talk to the city and the planner, and say, here's what we're thinking, get a warm, fuzzy feeling, move forward or not. And I think there's a little disconnect, like, I think a lot of us here give that warm, fuzzy feeling, and then it hits the next level, and you get vetoed and denied. So, having the rules with flexibility is great. And then, say, we did what we said we're going to do, so give us the approval, move forward. That's going to be huge. It's very important because you spend a lot of money on design fees, and I'm happy to take that money from people, and I'd like to get more money from people doing designs for them. But people aren't willing to spend money just kind of chasing things that aren't realistic or whatever. So, I think it's going to be great to have a flexibility, obviously, but once you do something- but once you do something innovative, be rewarded for it, and move on, you know. Get things built, and once things are built, again, like you said, just build them, snowballs them in a positive way.
No, and I hate to go back to Golden Corral, but I heard that they took a hundred thousand dollars whether it's on purchase options, design fees, flying people in, a hundred grand. And that doesn't mean we should approve anything because people spend money. We shouldn't slaughter houses next to residential, but, I mean, think about that kind of investment in those seats and then come away with, you know, a denial, six to one denial. And can you imagine, again, what Walmart's spending? They're flying those guys in from Arch-Negro and, you know, it's ten, ten foot after, you know, six-figure, you know, building.
See, that's what the developers said, you know, their vision. I'm glad we picked it up. If they'd have known, had something, if we'd had something in place like this, it would have- Not saying that they would approve the Golden Corral, but if we'd had a process in place, a checklist, and this is accurate to me what this is, is a checklist, and, okay, I've done all these things, now I don't have to go through the stuff then up there. Took a five and a half hours to get a no vote. This is devastating, okay? But I agree, you know, being an engineer that you are and being a manufacturer. When you've got a list, and you make that check off, and at the bottom line, you met all those requirements, what else can you ask for? You haven't, but personally, we have nothing. All we have is, you might say yes, he might say no, and I might say yes. But if you've got a checklist, and I've hit all those boundaries, hit all the landmarks, I don't know how you can tell me no. And I, this is a vision that we need to start using those tools to get them to work.
I just can't understand how we can continue to let, you know, six, seven residents stop projects. I'm not sure how we can get around it, or what can be done, how we can handle things differently, approach things differently. But we can never go, we can continue to let, you know, a handful of vocal residents stop projects. They don't have the same, you know, information that we have here and that you have. But it's just going to be difficult for them to really get into major projects, right?
One of the things I did want to share with you, and all we can do is try to encourage education and public participation. So we sent out three hundred and sixty-five notices the first round, and then we sent out an additional two hundred and forty-six notices. So we sent out six hundred and eleven notices to people in adjacent properties, not including subdivisions like associations who then broadcast out to others. So the law says three hundred feet, we normally do three hundred and fifty feet, we went seven hundred feet to try to make sure that we get the comments from the residents so that we can make informed recommendations and the council can make informed decisions. So, I mean, we're going above and beyond. It is a big project, but that's why we've put in this extra effort. And these guys are spending hours getting labels and tracking addresses and stuffing envelopes and making sure that stuff comes out. And, you know, Walmart had four neighborhood meetings on their own before we even had our meetings. And, you know, that's the only thing that we can do. We're never going to have everybody completely agreeing. There's going to be always those main centers. But I've saw a pretty balanced two-public meetings with, you know, people, some in favor, some against, some nodding their head, somebody, you know, being least satisfied that we're addressing all of their concerns. And that's the bottom line. That will help. And that process didn't happen so much with Golden Corral. So we're trying to learn, we're trying to learn, the developer's trying to learn. Hopefully, the city learns through that process.
The ones that really speak up are the ones that's usually against it. The ones that don't want it, those ones that show charlatanies and those vocal. People that really want the project to be a good idea, I think they think it's automatically going to happen because it's such a great idea and it looks so good. They just, they don't really participate, just think it's just going to happen. It's basically a great idea, but I would like to see, hopefully, more people that's really for projects will start showing up and doing more vocal. The process moves on a lot, a lot faster. Because I know city councils, they get a bunch of people in there that are playing and lying and totally against it. That's how they're going to vote.
If we have more things like this already on the books, looking at certain sites, what can possibly be done to them, this type of thing, like they keep talking about Northland, Northland. The biggest thing I hear people saying, and I won't quote my girlfriend's name, that don't want the- They're afraid of Detroit coming in and this turning into that. They're afraid of crime, what looks at crime. I'm looking at, it came out. Walmart. I think about all the different markets that closed in Southfield that I would go to. The one, the one just north of Nine Mile, there was Farmer Jack's there. There was a Farmer Jack's over on Lots of Roads and what's that, Eleven Mile. Now, I saw a lot of them closed, the Crowers deadened. We did get a Myers. No one wants it in their neighborhood. But all the stuff they're talking about doing, I got these mixed feelings because I'm trying to be the resident, I'm trying to think of the city. I'm thinking about the tax base that may help us keep out police, this, that type of thing. So we got to grow some kind of way, but we have something on the book. And we take different pieces and look at what can be done and get approval for that kind of thing. Now you don't have all the junk that happens that the neighborhoods are involved in this, too, so that they have a hand in it, so that now when it's bringing forth, you don't lose a Golden Corral. That was a big, big money base. But I understand the people that were in the area, they come out, they have to come out. It's in their neighborhood, it's in their backyard. And if the people don't handle the stuff right, they will have rights. So I understand the concerns and our position-
Coach Department, that's why the building's-
And that's why we asked the question, "How are you handling that?"
And, you know, I hate to refer to the incident that happened this Sunday, but sometimes there's random acts.
At the police station?
At the police station. I mean, who would have thought that someone would come in, because the police station was a gun, okay? Things do happen. And it's unfortunate, and thank God it wasn't a busy day, and they dealt with it. And it's unfortunate that the full force totally got killed. Those things do happen, and they can happen at stores and they can happen anywhere. That doesn't mean that it's an unsafe city and it's a bad city and I'd never go to the police department again. But it's just-
But you have to do your checks and balances, like they're talking about the security line. I'm glad they have that many security lines. And they need to state that, and that needs to be in the doctex, so they'll know, "Ooh, we don't want to commit any crime over there."
He's one of the top retailers in the world, they know what they're doing. I'm just one of the top retailers in the world, they know what they're doing.
But I want to know what ideas this board has, not board, commission has, for Northland. What do we need? I'm just throwing that out. Can I throw that out?
No, no, don't throw it out.
Yes, I can.
Well, let me just say that real quick.
Keep bringing it up.
I know it's late, but the overlay development district also will be for Northland and the DDA. The other thing is, and you hear it and I hear it from the audience, "Why did you bring these guys in here?" We didn't. It's a free market. And we don't control and own the land. Archdiocese of Detroit decided to sell the land or release the purchase option to Walmart. They did. It had nothing to do with the city. We didn't go out and recruit and say, "Go to-" The other thing that ties our hands with Northland is, it's privately owned. It's owned by a conglomerate out of New York City. They have like a thirty-two million dollar bank loan. And the property is appraised at twelve to fourteen million. So they're upside down on their mortgage. They need to spend a million, two million dollars in rehabbing it to attract tenants. The bank says, "Pay off your mortgage and we'll give you the million and a half loan." Then you have parcels, because it was developed before the city even existed. You have separate parcels that are islands among themselves. Jeff and I deal with the old Montgomery Ward's building. That lot, that ownership is literally about five feet outside the building. They don't have any parking, they have no right to even get to their building unless someone gives them permission.
Montgomery Ward, Greenfield.
Then the mothball former J.C. Penney store? They own and retain it because they don't want any competitor going in there within their ten-mile radius. And guess what? They own the air rights to anything out in the parking lot, so they won't allow any out parcel development. And people say to us, "Why don't you just get it redeveloped? How come you're not just redeveloping it?" They also have their own utility system. It's a steam-powered generator in the basement, they have their own electrical supply. And it's sixty years old, and it needs major rehab. Macy's needs about a hundred thousand square feet. They're in a four-hundred-thousand-square-foot building. They mothballed the top three floors. So there's so many challenges, I can't even tell you the half of the issues that are going on there. And it's just like, "How come you planners, why don't you just redevelop that? Why don't you just have Walmart?" Well, Walmart also looked, I can tell you, they looked at Eight Mile down by the old, was it Home Depot? Or what was that site there? The parcel's too small. Then we started looking at, "Well, what if we assemble? We had to close the street, we had to buy three, four parcels, they have to combine them. It's not deep enough." And then they said, "Even if this all worked, we still want to be on Twelve Mile and Southfield because it's a different market." So they say, "We'd love to build two stores in Southfield. We'd love to build one on Eight Mile, and we'd love to build one in Twelve and Southfield." One doesn't mean that they would build the- So, believe me, we've gone through all this.
Thanks for that information.
Why don't they pursue the waiver for parking? I mean, if they had the waiver for parking, they'd be in the parking lot.
The ninety-one places?
Yeah.
I don't see how you can, when that waiver was tied to the complete shopping center, where now half of it has been removed. And like I said, they technically, they keep the parking requirement. If they removed every island, they took every car corral, and all you would have is just a parking lot. And they, more than they exceed the landscaping, so it's not like we'd say, "Well, you're short on landscaping."
Yeah, there'll be a ton of extra parking there anyways. I'm just, I was just wondering why, you know, it's just going to attack that other property.
Do they have enough green space to clear calls, landings? I'd say they have enough.
I mean, in theory, we could, that could be our recommendation, is that we say, "We want you to put hundred spaces in green space for future parking, and if you need to build it." That's one thing. The other thing I would say is, we should consider, as a commission, when you make your recommendation, maybe consider saying, "We recommend a non-twenty-four-hour Walmart."
That was the other thing I was going to say.
I mean, that's something you can just say, "You know what, Walmart? We're happy to have you open for business from six AM to two AM, but from two AM to six AM, we recommend that you stay closed." I think that might go a long way.
What about that entrance at the street, where the funeral home? Are they able to at night to close that off so that they won't worry about people coming in the evening, going out that way, the funeral home is closed, why do they have to have that open?
We could talk to the funeral, about maybe gating that.
You know, gate it to where when you need it, open it, and when it's closed, you close it.
If you're not open past nine or ten PM, that could be gated. You would have to put a fence the entire length of that east, that shared property line. I mean, you can't just gate where the sidewalk is. You would have, you would have, basically, you have to gate off.
You can't gate the drive.
Unless you gated the area by- Guy Street. That's what I'm talking about.
The Guy Street, I'm telling you that.
We could, we could require them to put a gate up and close it off at ten o'clock at night.
But I'm thinking, and the neighbors are still a more secure, if people aren't just driving through there, roaming around.
But then, then, well, then how are they going to get in? Because you got some that want to get in, neighbors. I'm just throwing it out. Nah, I want to keep them out, but I don't want you to force me in. I might want to go that way.
It's the adverse scenario where the council turned it to one way, and we know there's twenty-three people every day going one way and going that way. It's human nature, some people are going to figure a way to get around it. But it's not going to be the majority of them. I don't want to keep you any longer. We're going to have time in December to talk about it.
Why not? Keep us coming on business.
We had a little, you know, some cool refreshment.
We should have a bar across the road, some apartments above it, and an office next to it, and we'd walk there.
And then he would take us all over there.
Hey, Borahan, Borahan, hold on, Borahan's on the-
Back to this presentation, could we get a copy of your presentation?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, good presentation.
See, that's right, that's right, you have no line, you like something like that. Are we meeting next week?
No.
Thank you. Good Thanksgiving. Same to you.